For emission, all Osiris Rex. It's done less than a month before the Osiris Rex spacecraft will land on Earth and release its sample from the asteroid. After the sample lands in Utah, part of the research is right here at the University of. Her and uh and it's exciting. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be great.
Ms. Hamblin? Do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Actually, I'm not hearing you. Uh, I understand Mr. Castro's not in today. Is that correct?
That is correct. Can you hear me? Okay.
So who on staff besides yourself will be taking the lead today?
Um, Nick Ross is our zoning section manager and he's going to be taking Mark's place today. I will be serving in my normal role as zoning administrator. And then we have one other staff person here who will be assisting as well. Who's Wyatt Berger?
Okay. Are we still waiting for a quorum?
I believe we have a quorum at this point. I see four board members here, but we did have responses that all six would be in attendance. So it's up to your discretion whether you'd like to continue or give them a few more minutes to join.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've had contact with um Mr. Dawson. He's attempting to join right now and should be with us in just a minute. And I do believe that Mr. Ann might have joined us on the phone. I can't quite tell the phone number if that's her or not, but Irma, if that's you, would you mind speaking up? I see a five two zero phone number that ends in seven five three, and I was wondering if that's Irma. Okay, I'm not hearing any response, but I did attempt to call and I didn't get an answer on that phone. On her phone number. Mr. Chair, Mr. Dawson has joined us.
Okay, uh, with that, I presume we have a quorum and we could begin the meeting?
We can begin the meeting. We are missing one board member that may join us later.
Okay, well, let's get started. I would defer to you on the study session matters.
Thank you. Mr. Ross is our section manager. For those of you that haven't met him. He is going to be taking Mark Castro's place today and will be running us through the study session and the staff reports and the main portion of the meeting, the public hearing as well.
Okay, let's uh, let's get started. We have uh three items on the uh, on the agenda. Let's uh, take them from the top.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, welcome everybody uh, to the August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three Board of Adjustment Meeting. Uh, Mr. Chair, would you like to start with a formal roll call?
Yeah, that would be uh, that would be good. Please do that.
Sure. Uh, let's start with uh, Board of Adjustment Chair, Mr. Marks.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Jesse Lugo.
Here.
Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Irma Duran. Bonnie Paulus.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a quorum.
Very good, very good. Uh, let's proceed then.
So uh, we do have two uh, upcoming scheduled cases for the next Board of Adjustment Meeting for September twenty-seventh. Uh, first one is case number C ten dash twenty-one dash zero nine. That is the Tucson Electric Power keynote to DMP one hundred and thirty-eight KV Transmission Line Project. Uh, that has been a case that's been continued for uh, the last couple of meetings, so that one will be coming forward at the next uh, scheduled meeting in September. The second one is case number C ten dash twenty-three dash zero eight. That is the Betancourt Residence New Garage. Uh, applicant is Michael and Alicia Betancourt. Located at twenty-nine twenty-one East Elm Street with R one zoning. Uh, please let myself or Lisa or or Mr. Berger know uh, whether or not you will be in attendance for that meeting so we can ensure a quorum. Um, we do have a little bit of feedback on um, meeting in person. I know that was a question uh, brought forward by some of the board members in recent uh, meetings. Uh, we are currently working with the Clerk's Office to um get access to the mayor and council chambers for that to occur. Uh, we're still kind of on standby until we get the formal go-ahead from the Clerk's Office that that space is available for us, but it will be uh, something we will continue to update you on.
Okay, very good. Um, could you repeat the date of the upcoming meeting?
Sure. Scheduled for September twenty-seventh.
November twenty-seventh. Okay, very good.
And if I, if I may interject on that, if you haven't let us know if you will be able to attend, please do so as soon as possible, board members, because there is a very large mailing that has to take place for that first case regarding the T E P Transmission Line. Um, it's something like three thousand mailed notices need to go out. So we'd like to know sooner rather than later if we're gonna be able to make that happen for the September meeting or not. Thank you.
Okay, should we move forward to today's cases?
Sure.
Do it.
Case, the first case for today's study session is case number C ten twenty-three dash zero four. This is Agave Sun LLC New Multi-Family Development located at forty-four forty-one through forty-four fifty-nine East Bellevue Street. As R two zoning. The appellant, uh, Lois Pollock is appealing the Planning and Development Services Director's decision to approve Design Development Option. Case number DDO dash twenty-three dash zero eight. Case DDO dash twenty-three dash zero eight is a request by property owners Agave Sun LLC to construct a new two-story multifamily development with reduced front street and side perimeter yard setbacks. The proper property owners filed a Design Development Option application with Planning and Development Services requesting the zoning approval necessary to allow the new two-story multifamily development to be constructed with reduced building setbacks as measured from the south, west, and east property lines. The DDO application was approved by the PDSD Director, finding the project in compliance with all required DDO general and specific findings of Tucson Unified Development Code Section three point eleven point one point D point one and two. The appellant is requesting a reversal of the Planning and Development Services Director's decision to approve case number DDO dash twenty-three dash zero eight. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time regarding this case, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question or two. First, is the appellant uh, an owner of a adjoining parcel? Is that the case?
The appellant is not an owner of an adjacent parcel. Uh, she represents the neighborhood that the parcel is located within.
Okay, okay. And then could you um attempt to answer how these um modified setbacks um, relate to the actual setbacks on the two parcels of budding, one to the east, one to the west?
I'm happy to. Um, so this is uh, zoned R two. Uh, non-residential zoning adjacent to residential or non-residential uses have a required ten-foot or three-quarters the height of the proposed wall uh, setback. The um, for this particular project, there are five total uh, reductions based on um, kind of a stair-stepped uh, facade of the of the buildings themselves. The first request is a uh, street side yard uh, setback reduction would typically be required thirty-one feet, three inches. Uh, they've requested to reduce that down to thirteen feet flat. Second reduction is uh, we're uh, along the uh, east property line. That required setback would have been fourteen feet, nine inches. They're requesting uh, five feet, one inch. Uh, on that same property line, there is a patio section with a lower height uh, where they are requesting um, a one-foot-six-inch setback or where the required setback would have typically been ten feet. And those same setbacks uh, that I just mentioned are the same request on the west property line. The final reduction is um, oh, I'm sorry, and that and that concludes the the requests of the DDO for this particular case, Mr. Chair.
Now, what can you say about the actual setbacks on the two adjoining parcels to the east and west?
Yes, um, might be helpful. Uh, Mr. Berger, could you, would you mind sharing um, maybe the site plan and we can kind of talk through this a little easier? Thank you. Uh, so just to orient you, north is actually pointing uh, right on this screen, uh, just to kind of orient yourself and and by the way, Mr. Chair, we do have a presentation uh, when we get to the public hearing later today uh, to kind of go into this uh, in a little more detail. But as you can see, the uh, the little rectangles towards the tops of the proposed units themselves, those are the patios that the applicant is requesting. Those particular patios are the, you can see the one foot-six inches away from the property line there. And then where the structure uh, itself starts, um, you will see that that setback is actually five feet, one inch from the property line. So the units themselves, um, the wall of that unit is actually five feet, one inch from the property line, both on the west and the east side.
Mr. Chair, are you asking what the existing setbacks are for the development on either side of the property?
Exactly.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. Thank, thank you for the clarification. Um, I don't have the specific uh, number. I can I can give you kind of a rough estimate using our our map tool. The development to the west appears to be roughly twelve feet from the property line. And there are numerous properties to the east. Um, hmm, two properties have very close setbacks. The one immediately um, to the southeast appears to be maybe two feet or three feet to the property line. Uh, the property just north of that one has a similar um, for an accessory structure, has a similar two-foot to three-foot setback for that accessory structure as well. To the north, there is a multifamily development that appears to have roughly a about a three-foot setback as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Let me just throw one more question at you, and that's specifically uh, what I can see on the screen now. The development to the west, do you uh, or can you measure the front yard setback of that project?
Sure. And just to clarify, you're referring to the street?
Correct.
Right, so that appears to be about thirty-five feet measured from the units to the property line.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, very good. I think that answers uh, excuse me, what I uh, had asked for. Um, I think we can turn to other board members to see if any of them have questions now. Yeah, Mr. Uh, Dawson does.
Yes, um, uh, okay, uh, Nick, you said that the uh appellant is um member of the neighborhood association. Does he represent himself or is he representing the neighborhood association? Just curious.
Sure, um, I believe they're representing the Neighborhood Association.
No, they are not.
Oh, they are not? Okay. Thank you for the clarification. They are not representing the Neighborhood Association.
They are a member of the Neighborhood Association, but this is not an appeal request on behalf of the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's kind of an important point, at least for me anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions of uh, Mr. Ross on this matter?
None.
Oh, there is one. Uh, Ms. Schubert has one.
Thanks, uh, just two quick questions. Um, one is uh the basis of what our vote is, is the only option to either determine that there was a mistake made or not, or are there other? Um, because we usually have a rubric, you know, it has to do with things like the limitations aren't self-imposed, it's a minimum variance required. Um, but for a DDO appeal, um, it seems like you know, if we decide to deny the appeal, um, it's because we are standing with the original determination. Is that correct?
Board Member Schubert, uh, Mr. Chair, you will be given the option to either agree with the decision, oppose the decision, or modify the decision.
And then in terms of the modifications, are the only modifications available concerning the setbacks specifically?
Yes.
Okay, because a lot of other concerns have been brought up in the um, letters in opposition, but um, it seems like setbacks are the only part of this that we're considering.
Uh, that would be correct, Ms. Schubert, and the motion templates that were provided to the board yesterday, and if you didn't receive that, let us know. There are a couple little um, different options if you choose to modify. There's some templates in there on how you may do that, but um, to reiterate your point, the items that are before the board today are solely related to the DDO request, which was for the five setbacks that Mr. Ross identified in his present presentation.
Okay, thanks. I did get the templates. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ross, I think that uh, completes all of our questions, uh, unless I hear otherwise, real quickly, uh, we should move to the next item.
Okay, let's move to item two. Item two is case number C ten dash twenty-three dash zero six. This is the Poverello House of Tucson located at two sixty-seven East Blackledge Drive. As R two zoning. The appellant Lori Clark is appealing the zoning administrator's determination. Case number TZ dash CMP dash zero two-two-three dash zero 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 six-three issued on April twenty-first of twenty twenty-three relating to the land use classification of the Poverello House as a home occupation adult daycare use. Pursuant to the authority granted, the zoning administrator by Unified Development Code Article eleven point three point one point B, when a proposed use does not conform to the wording of any land use class description, the zoning administrator shall determine the most appropriate land use class for that use. The appellant contends that the Poverello House fails to provide adult daycare services that can be licensed by the Arizona Department of Health Services and that the use cannot be classified as a home occupation as it involves a nonprofit business conducting its operations within a residential house.
Let me uh, ask a question or two. Um, so I think we start with the uh the alleged fact that the use is not described in the code directly relative to the the RT zone or is it correct, any residential zone that this this specific use is not called out specifically in? Is it, is that correct?
Um, I'll state, uh, Mr. Chair, that the use that's proposed to take place in this house is not one that is defined in the Unified Development Code or the zoning code at all. So in such circumstances as that, uh, the zoning administrator is authorized to make an interpretation as to what is the most closely related use that would be appropriate for that proposed use. Um, this happens pretty frequently that we have, you know, something that maybe it's part of one use or part of another, and so um, we try to find the most um, appropriate use to put them in, and then we determine whether it is permitted in that location or not.
So the uh, the use that you determined uh, or the category that you determine is most similar to the use is the home occupation adult care uh, use.
Yes.
Being a home occupation, is there a requirement that the owners of the property or the, I, let's stretch it, either to the owners or the renters uh, who are occupants of the main principal building must be the ones who operate the the adult care?
Uh, there is not a requirement for ownership. It does state that the residents of the dwelling unit are operating it, so for instance, a resident living in an apartment complex can have an home occupation. Um, we don't discriminate based on ownership or rental. Uh, my understanding on this particular case is that there are residents who will live there full-time and do offer the services that are proposed in the use.
So should I take that to mean that this use is not in effect yet? This is still in the proposed stage? Is that correct?
Um, I haven't talked to the operators in a little while, so I am not sure if they are in operation at this point. Um, last that I talked to them, they were still going through um, some renovations to the home. Sorry, excuse me, some renovations that they were doing to the home and um, getting all of their uh, things ready, but if they're here, they could certainly speak up during the public hearing portion and describe what they're doing more accurately.
Okay, um, but the implication of the requirement is that there are no outside employees allowed. Is that correct?
Um, I don't want to misspeak, so I will go back and look exactly at what the code says for the home occupation standards, because there are quite a few of them. But in the case of this particular um, interpretation, we did place conditions on the use as far as limits of how they can use the home for their proposed operations. I believe that's found in the staff report as the second attachment, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, and that was the original letter that was requested by the operators of Poverello House. And it highlighted some of those um items as far as hours of operation limits on um people coming during the day, those kinds of things. So we tried to write that in conformance as much as possible with the existing home occupation regulations. And so that was, the original request was by the operators for Poverello House, and that was in October of last year. And then the current determination was requested by the appellant um, in March of this year in response to the original um, letter.
So uh, Elise, why, why is the owner unhappy with your determination?
Um.
Why, what? They can continue to do what they're doing in the house. Why, why are they unhappy with your determination? I'm just, I'm not really sure I'm clear on that.
It is not the, it is not the Poverello House that's the appellant. It is a neighbor that is near them that is the appellant. They do not
Ah, okay.
wish to have um, this use classified in the way that I have determined and do not think it's an appropriate use in the residential um, zoning.
Thank you.
And I will give, go through a presentation during the public hearing that gives a little bit more detail just so that the public and the board may have the same amount of information regarding the parameters for this case in particular.
Miss Hamblin, I wasn't finished with all my questions. Let me, let me uh, add one here, and that is if, if my memory is correct, I think the appellant indicated that uh, she did not believe that the operation was being run by the residents, that there was some question or suggestion that that was not the case. Are you able to refute that, or, or, or did I misspeak about that recollection?
There is something in the materials, and I don't, please don't quote me directly, that it shouldn't be allowed to be run in the location because this is a nonprofit and it's, they're viewing it more as business operations. The determination to consider it a home occupation was based on my understanding of the use from the Poverello House, which is that there are two residents that live in the home full-time and then operate the use or the respite care that they're offering during the day.
Okay. So one other condition of the home occupation, I believe it's stated in one of your letters that it can only be conducted during the day. And I think there were specific times, maybe eight AM to five PM, something like that. Is there some suggestion that that is not actually what is happening?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, okay. I, I think that's all the questions I have. What about other board members? Do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Ms. Hamlin, is there a definition of soup kitchen in the UDC? And if so, would you bring that definition back to the regular meeting for us?
There's a soup kitchens are viewed as like a so let me clarify, there are shelter uses which are classified differently, and then there are soup kitchens which maybe just serve food. They are mentioned in the UDC. I can pull that information up and have it available during the meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Mr. Ross, I think we can move to the next item.
All right, Mr. Berger, did you want to take this one, or should I read this one into the record?
Handle this one, Mr. Ross, thank you, members of the board and Mr. Chair. This case today is C ten dash twenty-three dash zero seven. Steers Residence, new garage. The applicant is Mr. Bart Steers. The subject address is eight four nine nine East Woodland Road. And the zoning classification is SR Suburban Ranch. The applicant is requesting two variances for the proposed detached accessory garage. The first variance is to allow the combined total gross floor area of all accessory structures two hundred square feet or larger to exceed fifty percent of the combined total gross floor area of the principal structure. And the second variance requested is to allow the detached accessory structure to be constructed with an increased height from twelve feet zero inches to twenty-three feet eleven inches as measured from the design grade elevation to the middle between the eve and ridge of the pitched roof, all as shown on the submitted plans. A little bit of background on this property briefly is that, again, it is classified as suburban ranch zoning. The surrounding zoning classification is suburban ranch as well. There are a number of agricultural uses that are present on this property and other surrounding properties. Many of those properties have large detached accessory structures utilized for those agricultural purposes. The property was developed in the early seventies with a number of accessory structures built prior to the property's annexation into the city of Tucson in nineteen eighty-nine. The applicant is requesting those two variances in order to allow for the storage of farm equipment such as tractors and trailers in addition to the storage of other materials such as hay and feed and tack and whatnot. The property is within a floodplain, and so the purpose, to my understanding of the increased height, is to allow some of those materials to be stored higher up than the design grade elevation. This is the most this is the most reasonable location of, of the accessory structure in relation to connecting it to the principal structure. It's a pre-engineered building which wouldn't allow it to be attached to the principal structure and to ultimately remove the necessity for those two, those two variances. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, let me ask one or two. The building we're talking about is indicated as the proposed metal building at the very northeasterly corner. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, your assumption is correct.
Okay. So the first variance is to increase the fifty percent of the size of the principal building for all the total evolved accessory building areas. By how much? What would the percentage be if this was approved?
Sure, let me take a look at my notes real quick. So the gross floor area of the principal structure is approximately five thousand seven hundred forty-four square feet of gross floor area. The proposed garage or the proposed metal building as shown on that site plan has a gross floor area of twenty-seven hundred square feet. The combined GFA of all accessory structures exceeds the GFA of the principal structure by a hundred and two percent, so the total gross floor area of all accessory structures is about six thousand square feet or so. And the principal structure again is fifty-seven hundred forty-four square feet.
So could you run what that percentage is?
That is one hundred and two percent.
One hundred and two, okay. So there's double the area allowed.
Correct, yes.
And, and as far as total accessory buildings, I'm looking through the site plan. It looks like this is the only accessory building, or my misreading some other square just, just to the north of the pool.
Mr. Chair, so there are three accessory structures on the property, two of which are existing. There is this guest house right here that has a gross floor area of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five square feet. Again, the other existing accessory structure that counts toward the gross floor area requirement is this barn over here. It has a gross floor area of one thousand and twenty-five square feet. The third and final accessory structure toward that GFA requirement is the proposed metal building at a gross floor area of twenty-seven hundred square feet.
Okay, I think my last question is, have we heard from any of the abutting property owners? As, as to whether they oppose or support the request?
Mr. Chair, we have, we received two public comments regarding this variance request, both of which were in support of the variances requested. That includes the property across the street here off of Woodland Road as well as the property in the rear, which is the Bandolero Ranch off of Tinkaverty Road.
Okay, okay, very good. That's all I have. Let me ask the other board members. Do any of you have, Ms. Paulus, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wondered, I don't see any information on what the height is of the current principal structure on the property. I realize, I think I read somewhere that thirty feet is the allowable height in the SR zone, and based on the square footage of the main house, I was wondering what its height is measured at.
Ms. Paulus, you're correct that the maximum permitted height of a principal structure in the SR zone is thirty feet. Unfortunately, I do not have any understanding as to how tall the existing houses in relation to building height. I was gonna say, and then for all accessory structures, typically we permit a maximum building height of twelve feet if detached from the principal structure.
I have one more question. I don't know if you can answer this, but should the board desire to put a condition on this DDO? Is that something that we could do? For example, stipulating that no other accessory buildings will be permitted for this site?
Ms. Paulus, I'm not sure if I have the resources to answer your question.
I believe that if we're placing any conditions on this variance request, that it needs to be something that is a demonstrated relationship to that variance request. We do have our city attorney's office. Representative Ms. Bonham is here, so she can certainly chime in if she is able on this item, but I think that the, the request regard, sorry, excuse me, regarding the height maybe does not have a direct relationship to other accessory structures on the property.
No, but the total number percentage of square footage for this accessory structure in addition to the ones that are already there already will exceed what is allowable under the code. So it seems to me that that is related to the request that's being made.
So just to clarify, if they in the future did want to place another structure on the property, they are already above the threshold permitted. They would have to come back for another variance to do that.
Okay, let me ask the other board members. Do any of you have any questions on this matter? Okay, hearing none. I think we're done with this item. And either Mr. Berger or Mr. Ross, or Ms. Hamlin, are there other matters we need to go over during this study session?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final order of business for the study session today is our other business items. So today we have a request for a continuance of case number C ten dash twenty-one dash zero nine. This is the TEP keynote to DMP one hundred and thirty-eight KV transmission line upgrade, which is an appeal of a zoning administrator determination pertaining to UDC Section five point five point four point B. As I mentioned, this is the one scheduled for next, intending to be scheduled for next month's meeting.
Yeah, and we spoke to this earlier in the meeting when we were talking about our upcoming agenda. But just to clarify, on today's agenda, at the end of our agenda in other business items, we will be asking for your vote to allow the continuance of this case. It's been continued a couple times by the board. So we need you to formally allow the continuance so that it can be placed on next month's agenda. I believe that's all of our items for the study session unless there's anything else from the board.
Well, I think there's a good opportunity for me to say I will not be in town on the date of the next board assessment hearing. I won't be back until the night of the twenty-seventh.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marks. If there's others that would mind emailing us and letting us know your attendance, it would be appreciated. In the meantime, we can certainly take a brief break before our public hearing starts at one thirty, if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. We'll reconvene then at one thirty.
Okay, very good.
I They, um, you know, a lot of this kind of that I feel I'm not the expert on the
Mr. Chair, we're after one thirty. Would you like to call the meeting to order?
I would. Let's call this meeting to order. Ms. Hamlin, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Michael Marks.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Jesse Lugo.
Here.
Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Irma Duran.
Here.
Bonnie Paulus.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Um, I first like to welcome everybody in the virtual audience to the August thirtieth, two thousand twenty three session of the City of Tucson Board of Adjustment Meetings. I am the chairman. My name is Michael Marks, and I'm going to read to you some prepared comments to help you understand what is going to be done today and the procedures that we'll operate under. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining the meeting, you are giving consent to that recording. We have three hearings on the today's agenda plus an additional item that we'll be taking up. After each case is introduced, staff will present its staff report. Board members may then ask staff questions. After that, the applicant or his or her representative will have time to speak. Other people, first those in favor and then those in opposition, will have an opportunity to speak as well. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal if there's any opposition. Throughout this period, board members may ask questions of the applicant and other speakers. When all of that testimony is completed, the board will close the public hearing, discuss the matter, and then vote on a motion made and seconded by board members. All of those who wish to speak will be asked to first state their names and their name and address for the record. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience, and all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off unless you are addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to to the Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk Clerk's Office within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. At this time, I'm going to ask staff to raise their right hands so I can swear you in. And all members of staff should be included in in this. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
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 Okay, very good. That completes the preliminary comments. Now I'd like to ask staff if they can present the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first, I want to apologize, the Zoom platform we're using is not allowing us to share our presentation in presentation mode, so you're going to be seeing some of our some of the other slides in the on the side there, so I do apologize about that. Our first case today is case number C ten dash twenty three dash zero four. Agave Sun LLC New Multi-Family Development located at forty four forty one through forty four fifty nine East Bellevue Street. It has R two zoning. The appellant, Lois Pollock, is appealing the Planning and Development Services Director's decision to approve Design Development Option, case D D O dash twenty three dash zero eight. Case D D O dash twenty three dash zero eight is a request by property owners Agave Sun LLC to construct a new two-story multifamily development with reduced front street and side perimeter yard setbacks. The property owners filed a, excuse me, Design Development Option application with the Planning and Development Services Department, requesting the zoning approval necessary to allow the new two-story multifamily development to be constructed with reduced building setbacks as measured from the south, west, and east property lines. The D D O application was approved by the P D S D Director, finding the project in compliance with all required D D O general and specific findings of Tucson Unified Development Code Section three point eleven point one point D point one and two. The appellant's request to the board. The appellant is requesting a reversal of the Planning and Development Services Director's decision to approve case number D D O dash twenty three dash zero eight, which is a Design Development Option request by the property owners to allow the following modifications. The first request is a D D O to approve or a D D O approval to allow the front street perimeter yard setback to be reduced from thirty one feet, three inches to thirteen feet inch, thirteen feet, zero inches, measured from the buildings to the south lot line. to thirteen feet inch thirteen feet, zero inches, measured from the buildings to the south lot line. Second request is DDO approval to allow the side perimeter yard setback to be reduced from fourteen feet, nine inches to five feet, one inch, measured from the buildings to the east lot line. The third request is DDO approval to allow the side perimeter yard setback to be reduced from fourteen feet, nine inches, to five feet, one inch, measured from the buildings to the west lot line. The fourth request is DDO approval to allow the side perimeter yard setback to be reduced from ten feet to one foot, six inches, measured from the porches to the east lot line. And finally, the fifth request is DDO approval to allow the side perimeter yard setback to be reduced from ten feet to one foot, six inches, measured from the porch to the west lot line, all as shown on the submitted plans provided to you. Uh, related plan reviews. The Design Review Board. Zoning regulations require DDO appeals to be reviewed by the DRB for recommendation to the Board of Adjustment. This appeal request was heard by the DRB on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. The DRB recommends to the Board of Adjustment to modify the PDSD Director's decision to approve Case Number DDO dash twenty-three dash zero eight, finding requested item number one, DDO approval to allow the front-street perimeter yard setback to be reduced from thirty-one feet, three inches to thirteen feet, measured from the buildings to the south lot line in compliance with UDC Sections three point eleven point one point D point one and two. And requested items two through five not in compliance with UDC Sections three point eleven point one point D point one and two, specifically UDC Section three point eleven point one point D point one point F. It is the board's finding that the condition of the project requiring these modifications is a result of the design and not the actual physical site or conditions of the site. Planning and Development Services uh staff recommends upholding the decision by the PDSD Director to approve the design modifications requested in Case Number DDO dash twenty-three dash zero eight. It is the opinion of staff that the project is in compliance with the UDC Section three point eleven point one point D Design Development Option findings for approval. To date, we have received a total of seven le- letters supporting the appeal. Two of them are outside of the uh notice area. Zero letters opposing the appeal. Uh, for the record, uh board members have been provided copies of the letters. Mister Chair, members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation for this case.
Okay, Mister Ross, I have a procedural question for you uh which I failed to ask during the study session. And that is uh typically at this point, I would turn and ask the uh um the uh well, the one who filed the uh variance to uh to speak, but the the first person we're talking to is the appellant. At this point, is that not correct?
That is correct, Mister Chair, and I apologize. I I forgot to uh mention, we do have a presentation to share with you as well before we turn it over to the appellant. Uh, I apologize for not uh jumping into that after the staff report, so if you're ready, I can go through that.
Well, just one follow-up, then typically uh if uh we have a variance request and there is a objector, uh the one that would rebut the objections would be the the one who brought the variance request. So is it fair to say that um staff would be rebutting the appellant's presentation? If there is a a a claim of factual error, would they be doing that on their own, or are they deferring to the actual property owner on that?
So in this case, the items essentially in front of the Board of Adjustment are the actual PDSD Director's decision. It is not the um on the app, the original applicant or developer of the property, the it's regarding our decision that is being appealed. So staff will be providing an analysis and an explanation of why that PDSD Director's decision was approved and can provide responses to the appellant in that case.
Okay, very good. Um. So why don't you move on to that expanded presentation?
Thank you, Mister Chair and members of the board. Um, I've gone through, uh those were the five items uh on the previous slide. I'm sorry, Mister Burger, can you go back one slide, please? Those are the five uh requests for the DDO approval. Um, and Mister Burger, do you mind actually going to the street view, just so we can kind of orient uh the board and uh the chair to uh where the property is located in the surrounding environment?
Mister Burger, we're only seeing your PowerPoint screen. Have you opened the street view?
Let me uh let me stop sharing real quick. Hold on a moment.
Thank you. This is something we haven't done before with the board, but we thought it might be helpful just to um get a sense of the location. We have done field trips with the board in the past. And so in lieu of that, we thought sharing the street view might be helpful to get a sense of where the property is and the the properties that are adjacent to it. So we appreciate your patience as we kind of explore this as a new option to present for the board.
Great. Thank you, Mister Burger. So uh as you can see now, shared on the screen, this is the street view of the site in question. It has uh to best of our knowledge, has never been developed. It has always been a vacant site within this neighborhood. Um, and Mister Burger, if you kind of um take us around uh the adjacent properties there, uh you'll see to immediately to the west, there is a an existing multifamily uh development of similar density as the one being proposed on our site. Um, there is multifamily uh both on the same side of the street as well as the south side of the street. Several of those uh projects have reduced setbacks as well, uh both on the street and uh interior property lines. And a little bit further east down the same block, you'll see um it transitions a little bit into some more uh single-family uh style development, some of which have uh guesthouses and or um additional accessory uh structures in their in their yards. Um, but this kind of gives you just a a a sense of where we are uh and what is around the proposed development site. Okay, I think, thank you, Mister Burger. Can we jump back to uh the
Sure.
question, please?
Yes. Just a moment, hold on a moment, please. Okay. I think now I actually have the full screen as well.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've gone through this, Mister Chair and members of the board. This was the requested uh reduction, uh all five of them, uh which uh we did grant and uh now we are being appealed. Uh, next slide, please? This is the site plan that was proposed uh of the of the proposed development. Uh, you can see it's twelve units. Um, and as we discussed a little bit earlier in our study session, uh you'll see the um adjacent uh north is to the right, just to orient everybody. The uh property lines there, this the rectangles that you're seeing, those are the proposed porches with the one foot, six inch setbacks proposed. Uh, the structures themselves uh are five feet, one inch away from those property lines, both on the west and east property lines. They are meeting their parking requirements and the dimensional standards required for two-way access of the street and providing a four-foot sidewalk uh on in front of uh each row of units there. And uh towards the north end of the site, there is a required uh hammerhead turnaround for emergency uh vehicle service. Next slide, please? Here is the uh elevations of the proposed uh structures. This is the uh left and the right elevation. Um, this is what would be um on the north side of the property. And Mister Burger, if you advance to the next slide, uh this is the facade that would be facing both the east and the west property uh lines. So you could see those are those porches that will be one foot, six inches away, um measured to the to the face of that post that you're seeing there. Um, and I also would like to point out, the uh applicant for the DDO uh did not propose any second-story windows on either elevation, east or west uh to help mitigate any privacy concerns that adjacent uh neighbors might have. Next slide, please? These are the findings for uh approval for DDOs, and Mister Chair, if you find it helpful, I'm happy to read through these. Um, or we can just um, you know, kind of have it shared on the screen there, but I'm happy to do so if if you wish.
Actually, I don't think that's necessary. Uh, if you just leave that on the screen for another fifteen seconds, maybe uh that'll be enough time for the board members to read this on their own. But let me ask the question while we're on this page. Is it the requirement that that each and every one of these standards be met?
That's correct, Mister Chair.
Okay. Okay, I think uh we can move on.
Okay. Uh, Mister, mi- 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 Mister Chair?
Yes.
I yeah, I have a real quick question on on a DDO, if someone applies for a DDO, uh I'm sure there are requirements, and I've seen uh sheets that are uh applicable to DDO uh submittals. Uh, is that required to have any kind of notification sent out to adjacent property owners? Uh, it used to be, because I've done a DDO a long time ago, and uh it was required that I send out uh information to adjacent property owners.
Yeah, we defer to Mister Ross.
Yes, that's correct, Mister Chair, members of the board. The DDO notice uh area is one hundred feet from the proposed property and uh the ward offices and the um neighborhood association.
We could move on.
Okay, and just to conclude, um case number C ten twenty-three dash zero four. Uh, zoning regulations require DDO appeals to be reviewed by the Design Review Board, uh which occurred on May nineteenth, as I met previously mentioned. The DRB recommended to the Board of Adjustment to modify the PDSD Director's decision to approve Case Number DDO dash twenty-three dash zero eight. The DRB found requested item number one, DDO approval to allow the front-street perimeter yard setback to be reduced from thirty-one feet, three inches to thirteen feet, measured from the building to the south lot line. And they found that that did comply with UDC Sections three point eleven point one point D point one and two. Requested items two through five, however, were found not to comply with those sections. It is the DRB's findings that the condition of the project requiring these modifications is a result of the design and not the actual physical site or conditions of the site. So I did just want to mention that uh that is what the DRB found uh when we took the case to them for their recommendation. So with that, that now does conclude staff's presentation for this particular case.
Mister Ross, just to make it clear, they approved DRB item number one, but they did they rejected items two through five.
That is correct. They recommended approval for item one and rejected items two through five.
Okay. Now, in the the template, is it, is there an option, if if the board so wished, to approve or take action consistent with the DRB? Is is there a motion in the template that would be consistent with that action?
Um. I don't believe there is a motion in the template that matches that, and I apologize. Um, but you can certainly make that motion uh if you want to be consistent with the DRB. However, because the Board of Adjustment um has kind of a different task than the DRB, if you are going to modify the original DDO approval, there needs to be findings that state why you think that that modification should happen in relation to um the code. So I just want to make that clear for the board members if that is their desire at this point.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I have no further questions. How about the other board members? Do any of you have a question at this point? And I see a hand again from Bonnie Paulus.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I'd like to know what is the stated purpose of the Design Review Board in the UDC? And what is the makeup of the Design Review Board? Are they laypeople? Are they professionals in the development community?
Thank you, Mister Chair, members of the board. Uh, the DRB is composed of professionals of the development community. Uh, their mission in relation to DDO appeals uh is to provide a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment.
And they use the same findings that the zoning administrator used in that we are to use for our determination?
That is correct.
Okay, are there any other questions of staff at this point? We're hearing none. Um, thank you, Mister Ross and Ms. Hamblin. I'll uh ask the uh appellant if uh he or she, and I think it was a she, is uh here and uh if she is, can she uh raise her, raise her right hand? And I think I I see which square you're in. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Lois Pollak. I live on the forty-one hundred block of East Lester Street.
Okay. Well, why don't you um make your presentation at this point?
Yeah, I don't have any slides to show, but I have my argument, which is basically what I submitted uh uh in the uh appeal. So I am the, for the last eleven years, the President of the Board of Garden District Neighborhood. Uh, we are located in one square mile. We have a lot of infill projects. I'm speaking on behalf of our board, but also of our neighborhood. Uh, we are the the voice of people, uh partially because uh we have so many rentals and out-of-town landlords, as is the case in this area. Um, the board is in full agreement with the appeal decision, and uh so there are also, as mentioned uh already, two adjacent property owners who are also opposing the DDO. So we're all, you know, as a group, uh basically appealing this decision. When a project in our neighborhood uh comes up, we look, a DDO request or a zoning change or anything might occur. The first questions we ask is, does it meet the overarching purpose of the zoning codes? The purpose is spelled out in the opening sentence of Tucson's zoning code, which states the code is to protect and promote the general health, safety, and welfare of all present and future residents of Tucson. The second question we always ask is, does a project meet the actual requirements of the zoning code? For this project, we have to say no, and that's why we were opposing it. Um, a DDO is in fact a type of variance, even though it's called a DDO. And the applicant must meet all of the DDO findings to be granted with this to be granted, this DDO variance. And while we have an issue with, you know, various ones in there, we also uh we're looking at finding F. And this, the finding F is the modification applies to property that cannot be developed in conformity with the provisions of this chapter due to physical circumstances or conditions of the property, such as irregular shape, narrowness of the lot, exceptional topog- ta- topography or the location. Um. Nowhere does this finding state that consideration be should be given to what the applicant intends to build on the property. Nowhere does it state that if the project requires sidewalks or a private street, that the applicant should be given greater consideration than the person wanting to construct a smaller project. In fact, uh if you research legal articles and things about uh findings for the provision, um case law has ruled that uh courts have ruled that where variance or variances should be granted sparingly. um, case law has ruled that, uh, courts have ruled that where variants are, variances should be granted sparingly. An applicant for variance needs to show unnecessary hardship and that hardship must be unique to that property, such as difficult topography, shape, whatever. Um, Development Services argues that code changes constitute an unnecessary hardship, because recently there was a, a code change. However, the fact is that all properties bear that hardship. So no matter who develops where, wherever, they're all going to fall, fall under those zoning codes. And therefore, you know, it's a, it's a level of the playing field for everybody. So we're, you know, basically, uh, we are objecting on the fact that this is not an unusual shape or anything else. The property is flat, it's a rectangle, there's no arroyos running through it, there's no unusual drop offs or anything like that. Uh, and it will impact the people in the surrounding properties. Now, now, the other issue, which is, is something that everybody in the area has to take into consideration. I'm just gonna, I know this is not in the DDO argument, but the property is in a FEMA flood zone. It is in fact about two hundred feet from two different floodplain areas. And so Catalina is one giant flood zone north to south. Belvidere is one giant flood zone north to south. With reduced setbacks, we are, we cannot figure out from looking at any of the drawings or plans that were submitted. And they didn't have to go through the entire process, the applicant. And so the plans have varying different numbers on them, they're not accurate. Uh, they, you know, you look at the south end and it says one thing, you look at the north end, it says another thing, some of the numbers are left out. But we don't understand how there could possibly be enough room to collect water on the property and not be feeding those floodplains, which are impacting all of the residents in that area. You can float a boat down Belvidere and Catalina when it rains. So we are very concerned about that, that property, there was nothing on the drawings that said how much higher the grade is going to be made in order to, um, be in compliance with the FEMA, uh, flood zone building. And so, uh, I, I see that one of the, um, residents that's adjacent who wrote a letter just, and I just got that letter yesterday, they wrote a letter saying that exact same thing. Even though there's going to be a block wall surrounding the whole property, it's still going to be higher than the, the current properties. So it, you know, you, you, we don't know what we're going to end up with until they build it. Yes, they have done things like taken away, um, uh, the second story windows, but I see there's first story windows. Uh, and, and as you saw in the staff's presentation, they showed that the adjacent properties to the east are closer to the lot line. Well, these properties were built in the forties, you know, most of them. And so you can expect things like that, and those are more single family, uh, maybe two families per property on the east side. There's two properties that are adjoining on the east side. And so, but so it's, it's by all these circumstances that we think that this should not be allowed. It's a severely reduced area. I mean, if it was one side or at one end, they needed a couple of extra feet or something, no one probably would have said a word. But when you're going down to eighteen inches from ten feet, that's an enormous giveaway. And it will only affect the adjoining properties. So again, you know, we have to defer to that, to the, the DDO where it has that uh, number, code, you know, code F, that also the DRB, uh, was looking at. That there's nothing unusual about this property. What is unusual is the size of the development that they want to try and put on the property. And so, you know, we're talking equity all the time around the city now. We're, we're trying to be safe. We've got sixty mile an hour winds coming off homes now. It's, it's going to be this way forever. And now we're talking safety big time with fire. You know, yes, they can put fire retardant on buildings and, you know, it's block and everything. But you know, in reality, the codes were made for safety. We've got to have safety from flood, safety from fire, safety from, you know, any kind of disaster uh, that could possibly occur. And, and it's a very real thing with this, this, uh, current, you know, climate we're in. So, um, we, we need, we know we need development. We know there's going to be infill. That property allows two-story, no problem. We have no problem with that. We welcome development. But this DDO process also does not let people have input. And so the reason I had to file the appeal is because there's no public input on the front end. Except you can write a letter to the zoning examiner and say why you don't want it. Otherwise, there's no public notice. There's only a hundred foot notice from the property line, like they were saying, but for an appeal, I had to pay for a four hundred foot notice. So the, the applicants, and you know, these are things that, you know, are just the way it is. The applicant has to pay, oh, somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars, less than four hundred dollars. The appellants have to pay close to a thousand. No neighbors have a thousand dollars to spend. We live in an under, you know, our, our, that section over there, there is prob- it's probably eighty percent rental, if not more. And out of town landlords, those out of town landlords, they're not going to file appeals. They could care less. So as a neighborhood association, we have to try and watch out for the residents, whether they're renters or owners, you know, they're rich or poor. You know, we try to look out for the best interest and the quality of life. But safety is the number one priority. So anyhow, that's, that's pretty much, you know, you can, I'm sure you got all the paperwork with what my appeal was, and it really is just that, you know, that information and what I've said here.
Okay.
So I, I really appreciate the time to be able to address, um, you know, the board and, um, because it's a very important issue and will be a, um, uh, precedent for other development in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you, uh, have you been involved in the design review board, uh, process? Were you aware of it? Did you, uh, maybe attend the, uh, the meeting yourself?
Yes, I did attend the meeting. And they let me speak for a couple of minutes. Um, and, uh, yeah, it was very interesting. And I understand the difference between what they were trying to do versus, you know, what you're trying to do, what your, you know, your charters are. But yes, uh, we did, that, I, I just got a couple of minutes. They spent the bulk of their time looking at the drawings and looking at the, the surrounding properties and their setbacks and what types of residences they have, because it's a mix. You know, there's a mixed use here. There's some residential, uh, there's some multi-housing. Um, we've got a variety. There's some single story, two-story, mostly single story. But you know, we all understand that, you know, two-story is, is in the, in the zoning. But yes, it was an interesting process.
Let me, uh, ask, assuming you are familiar with the decision of the DRB. And I'm not suggesting, uh, any inclination necessarily that the board would, uh, have a similar, uh, tact with this case. But would you be satisfied with the DRB approval?
I think, um, generally, they hit the nail on the head with, but, but however, they didn't get into any specifics as to what would be acceptable. Just that what was proposed was not acceptable. Now, the front setback, I still think it's not enough due to the amount of flooding. Because the basins that they show in the plan are extremely small. And so on, all the water is going to go off the front side of the, of the property. So if there's not enough catchment areas on the east or west side, it's going to go right out the driveway in the front. I don't know how they would ever stop it. And so, yeah, they'll have flooding themselves if they don't figure out how they're going to retain it. And I, this, and so maybe their intention is to retain it in the back, except that that's not, can't all be retention. But anyhow, as far as your question goes, I would personally, I would rather see that they meet all of the setbacks. Because it's consistent with what everyone else is doing in the area. Um, I didn't take a tape measure out there. Some people have used a little bit of setback maybe for parking, but it's still setback. And there's not cars there all the time. And so we, and we have a problem in that area. Honestly, I think whoever moves into that area won't be happy with it, you know, because it's such a, there's so many, it's not a luxury apartment area. There are a lot of lower income, and not to say that that's, I mean, we, we welcome low income. We have a lot of refugees, we have a lot of low income people. We were known for low income and they placed people here. We, we like that. So I, and parking is, it, we don't know the use, you know, and we weren't allowed to take that into consideration, really, when we wrote an appeal. So it's interesting, we have plan, we see plans, but there's not enough information on the plans to know exactly what was going to occur, like how much higher they're going to put the building. And so, but, because if you, if you put another two feet on that lot to put the building on it, then all of a sudden, your first story windows look over onto the east and west. And, you know, then it was concerning about where's all that water off the roof going of the patio? So that's going to go over probably, I think you have to put gutters on probably, but we all know that the rain comes down so hard now. It just flows off the roof. It can't even be caught by the gutter anymore. So, yeah, it's, it's very concerning all the setbacks and, and you know, if we had to, to give up the front setback from thirty to thirteen feet, I guess that would be, you know, a good um, compromise if, if the others were brought back to ten feet. So, yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I think we've, uh, we've spent a lot of time already. Let me, uh, let me see, and, and I appreciate all your comments. Uh, let me see if any of the other board members have any questions for you at this point. And if they do, and I see Ms. Polis has got her hand up. Um, so stay put and we, uh, may, we'll at least have one question for you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, may I ask a question of staff that arose as a result of the appellant's uh, presentation?
You may.
Um, okay, I'd like to ask, um, staff two questions. Of the adjacent properties that you mentioned in your report, did any of them request or need a DDO to develop that property? And although they show no east and west facing windows on their site plan, is their plan subject to change or must it be adhered to when they come in with their final development plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, the adjacent properties were built, uh, long ago. And, uh, we don't have any record of a process for reduced setbacks for those, for those properties. However, if they were constructed today, they certainly would have needed, at least the properties to the east would need a DDO to locate those buildings in the place that they are currently. The property to the west, it's a little unclear without seeing a site plan, whether or not they're actually meeting their required setback there. It looks like they're pretty close to meeting it, um, but I cannot, I can't really comment on the property to the west without knowing for sure. The property to the north, um, certainly would have required a reduced setback. I have not looked up the history on that site. That might be a little bit newer of a development. Um, but that property looks like it's maybe two to three feet from the south property line. Um, and that certainly is not meeting current setbacks and would have required some sort of setback reduction, uh, for that approval. Uh, regarding your, uh, second question, uh, Ms. Paulus, the, uh, eliminated windows on the second floor were intentional, um, due to the, uh, known DDO request. Uh, the applicant has not indicated that they would be intending to add those windows, uh, either way. I, I suppose that could be added as a condition of an approval that they were, you know, should, uh, should a reduction be granted that windows cannot be placed on the second story. Uh, however, we found our findings, uh, to be in compliant with the criteria for the DDO based on having no windows on that second story. I hope that answers your question.
And, uh, Ms. Polis, are those all your questions? Okay. Uh, anybody else have a question for Ms., uh, Pollak? Hearing none. Um, thank you, Ms. Pollak. And, and in fact, uh, based upon what might come up next, you may have an opportunity or we may ask you a question later on, but for the time being, uh, we're satisfied that we've heard what we need to hear from you. Um, let me ask, is there anybody else in the virtual audience who had, who is here to speak on this case?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, this is, uh, Rene Martinez with, uh, Talavera Engineering. We are the, um,
But I ask you to, just hold that for a second. Could you raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name again and your address?
Okay, my name is Rene Martinez with, uh, Talavera Engineering and Construction. Uh, our address is two four five five East Speedway, Suite one oh two, and two thousand eight five seven one nine.
So you're here representing the company you work with?
Yeah, that's, uh, the owner, the owner.
You are the owner of a company?
No, we, we are working for the owner of the property.
I follow now. Okay. Well, why don't you proceed with what, uh, comments you wanted to make?
Yes, uh, it's basically the main, the main, main concern, and, and then the, the application intent of, of, uh, DDO was the setbacks. Uh, uh, Mr. Lois, uh, Mr. Pollak's concerns about the drainage and all that, that, that is seriously taken into consideration by professional engineers. And, uh, it will be reviewed by the engineering department at the City of Tucson Development Services, which that, uh, uh, we're not worried about that. That will be addressed during the the resumé of, of, uh, review comments and, um, if I, if, if there's need more, more area for, for basins, uh, we will provide it. And, uh, and, um, but that's going to be at that latter stage. The main thing for the DDO, as you know, is going to be the, the setback requirements. And, uh, one of the main concerns as they, that they, um, they were, um, uh, concerned about is, uh, the privacy. I guess that privacy was very well taken care of. Um, and that, and that was pretty much the, the major one. The closeness to the, to the property line for the porch, that's an open, an open area, so it's, there's ventilation. Can, ventilation was another concern they had also on some of the comments for, from the appellant. But, uh, that's open. I think that's also addressed. And, um, again, seeing the proximity of the neighbors to the property line, I mean, I don't think our point of cutting the setbacks to the requested, i- it won't be an issue. So, and that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't have any questions for you. Do any of the other board members have any questions?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I have a question for, uh, is, um, was there any attempt on the part of the architect? I assume there was an architect involved considering the size of the project, uh, to design the complex in more strict conformance with the code. Just, uh, open question for you.
Yes, we, we tried and during the initial stages of, of the design, we were in contact with the City of Tucson staff. We, we have many, many different email exchanges. And, um, we, we both agree that this, this was a, a possible outcome to meet, uh, my client's, uh, needs and, um, and still comply as much as we could with the code.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Well, hearing none, and unless I hear from a board member that they wish to have more information from any of the speakers, including the appellant, Ms. Pollak, I would close the hearing and ask for a discussion amongst the board members. and a, a motion if anyone is in a position now to, uh, to make such a motion.
Let's say, I think we can just add that comment.
And just, uh, while you're thinking, I just, uh, I want to acknowledge, uh, the gentleman just spoke that he's got his hand up. But when the hearing is closed, then that really ends the period for, uh, all public input. And so it's now just in the hands of the board members. And, uh, obviously the options are to approve or deny as requested or as approved by the planning director or to approve as the DRB approved or as you might further modify the, uh, uh, the approval. Um, but as Ms. Hamblin said, if you're gonna accept or ratify essentially the DRB approval, you've got to be clear on your findings. Um, but, uh, I will shut up for a second and hopefully somebody else has something to say.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, um, I, I'm just, I'm just curious. I know that, uh, the question was asked as to who is gonna speak up in defense of the, uh, from the staff, you know, because the staff would be, uh, uh, to defend their decision. Uh, is there anyone from staff that is going to speak up and, uh, speak in favor of, uh, upholding the DDO, uh, as opposed to, uh, uh, denying it?
Well, I, I think the staff has already, uh, defended the DDO at their, at the onset in their staff report. I think my comments about, uh, rebuttal relate to any comments they might make uh, in response to the comments from the appellant. And I didn't hear of any attempt by staff members to make such, uh, comments or, or make any comments in response to Ms. Pollock's comments. But, um, let me ask directly at this point. I- i- is there any staff member that does want to respond to the comments that were made, uh, by Ms. Pollock or, um, by the gentleman after that?
Um, the only clarification that I will offer is that um, the DDO just process wise is requested before final approvals on a development package or site plan. So some of the concerns that were brought up and items that were mentioned are still under review and consideration by PDSD staff. Um, because they are separate almost from the actual DDO consideration, which just has to do with the reduced setbacks. So all other items relating to, um, zoning, engineering, landscape, floodplain, any of those things will be resolved um, per the city's regulations in the review process of the development package permit.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Dawson, are you, uh, satisfied that, uh, you have the information you need?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Um, does anybody, uh, wanna take that step and make a motion? Ms. Paulus?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure I'm ready to make a motion, but I wanted to express why I'm leaning the way I am. Um, I do believe that the property in question has no physical constraints that would warrant DDOs of this magnitude to be granted on the site. The east and west property, um, setbacks that are being proposed really do impact the existing structures that are there regardless of whether or not there are two-story windows. We're talking about noises, odors, a place that is being presented to the new development as a place, as a patio and a porch where outdoor activities would take place. And they're being proposed to be less than two feet from the property line with existing residences built obviously before nineteen seventy, when those privacy issues were not something that anybody ever contemplated. I tend to agree with the Design Review Board, who is made up of design professionals who work within the development community. And I think understand these issues better than most of us who are sitting here right now. Um, I'm curious as to why they felt that the setback to the south was not a design consideration, but I would be willing to defer to their expertise. But in my mind, I don't think I can support the DDO, the decision that was made with regard to the perimeter setbacks on this property.
So, um, so we understand. Let me ask staff if the motion that Ms. Paulus has described would be a motion to approve the appeal, would it not?
Um, it would be a motion to uphold the director's decision for potentially item number one, if I'm understanding her direction correctly, and reverse the director's decision on items number two through five. And if that was her wish or the board's wish, there needs to be specific findings listed, um, for those items two through five as it relates to the DDO findings found in the Unified Development Code.
So essentially she would have to indicate which of those findings that need to be found are fit, have been fit, have failed to be demonstrated.
Correct.
And, and would it be that as long as there was one that failed? That would be sufficient?
Um, I'm not sure I understand the question. You would need to make a motion that outlines specifically if it's the same finding for all the ones you wish to reverse, then you could certainly state that. But if it's a different finding for different, um, ones, then you need to articulate that. So for example, if the goal was to approve the first request or uphold the first progress request, you would say that um, you agree with the director's decision on those items and then you could make a motion that items two through five, you re- wish, wish to, um, reverse the director's decision, finding that items two through five do not comply with um, said section of the DDO findings and articulate why it does not comply with that finding. Did I answer your question, Mr. Marks?
I, I, I believe so, um. Before I ask the other board members, is there a second? Could I ask staff if they, they could put up on the screen um, the list of all the findings that you showed once before?
Yes, Mr. Berger will pull that up in the PowerPoint presentation. Um, there's a list of the findings and he'll share that in just a moment.
Okay, so.
So to, um, clarify these findings, I'm just gonna try to walk you through it a little bit. Um, the ones that are on the left-hand side that are under general findings, those are for all DDO requests. So a DDO can actually be for other things besides a setback. Um, so any kind of DDO has to meet the findings that are in item one. Specific for setbacks or wall heights, you have to also meet the findings that are in item number two. So in this case, because they are requesting a setback reduction as part of the DDO, they have to meet all findings on the screen.
So if they, if the motion were to indicate that they, the maker of the motion does not believe that they've satisfied one of the findings, let's say one F, the modification applies to property that cannot be developed in conformity with the provisions of this chapter due to physical circumstances or conditions of the property, that would be sufficient?
Yes, you just need to state that as and for each of the DDO requests of the five.
Okay, very good. I, I understand. I, I hope the, uh, maker of a motion does. Um, um, so Ms. Paulus, do you wanna restate your motion and uh, make reference to a finding that that, uh, is, is not achieved, been achieved?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I actually did not make a motion. I was explaining why I am taking the position that I am. But I will make a motion. Uh, I would like to make a motion to reverse the zoning administrator's decision to approve DDO two, three, oh, eight in the case C ten twenty-three oh four. Items number one through five are, um, I believe that item number one F states it, um, very succinctly that this property in no way has any physical constraints on it that would require this DDO. Um, this is purely requested because the design of the proposed project um, won't fit onto this property without it. I also believe that for items two through five, that item one G and two E also apply with respect to privacy, noise, odors, um, sounds that would be inflicted upon the people who are existing on both the east and the west sides. So for those reasons and those findings, I would reverse the motion or I would reverse the approval of the DDO in this case.
Is there a second to that motion? Seems like there is not. Is there another board member that wishes to make another motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, could you have, uh, put up on the screen the, um, the findings of the designer review board that they, uh, the five or what was it, five findings that they, they said, okay. Yeah. Now, the design review board, uh, findings, they had one through, uh, there were.
Now, there it is.
This is the correct screen.
Recommendation is right there.
Yeah, okay. Um, let me read this for a moment. Um, okay. All right, Mr. Chair. Uh, I move that in the case of, uh, C ten dash twenty-three dash zero four, Gabesun LLC, New Multi-Family Development, uh, that we uphold the Development Services, uh, Director's DDO, uh, for the setback of front uh, yard setback. Uh, but that we, uh, hold with the DRB findings for items two through five and that, um, we, uh, uh, deny or, uh, do not uphold the Development Services Director on those, uh, four items. Uh, that would be my motion.
Good. So the motion is to, uh, uphold the planning director's decision with respect to the first DDO request.
Exactly.
Overturn his decision with respect to requests two through five.
That is correct.
And I think what we've been advised that you'll have to make reference to a finding that was on that screen a few minutes ago that it has not been, uh, uh, satisfied.
Well, I'll, um, I'll, I'll refer again to the, uh, item F of the general findings. Um, and, uh, and G. Uh, oh, let's see, okay, it's not. Yeah, those would be the two ones that I would include.
That's one F and two, what was that? D, did you say?
Yeah, um.
One F and G.
No, uh, one F and, uh, one G.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The chair votes aye, uh, and I believe I heard no nay, so that the motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I asked for a roll call.
Okay, yes, we'll have one. Ms. Hamblin?
Michael Marks?
Aye.
Bruce Dawson?
Aye.
Jesse Lugo?
Aye.
Miranda Schubert?
Aye.
Irma Duran?
Aye.
Bonnie Paulus?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Ms. Pollock, thank you. Uh, and, uh, we are moving now to the next item. Um, which I'll ask staff to, uh, identify and to provide us with a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Case number C ten dash twenty-three dash zero six. Poverello House of Tucson located at two sixty-seven East Blackledge Drive has R two zoning. The appellant, Lori Clark, is appealing the zoning administrator's determination. Case number TZ dash CMP dash zero two two three dash zero 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 six three issued on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three relating to the land use classification of the Poverello House as a home occupation adult daycare use. Pursuant to the authority granted the zoning administrator by Tucson Unified Development Code, Article eleven point three point one point B. When a proposed use does not conform to the wording of any land use class description, the zoning administrator shall determine the most appropriate land use class for that use. The appellant contends that the Poverello House fails to provide adult daycare services that can be licensed by the Arizona Department of Health Services and that the use cannot be classified as a home occupation as it involves a nonprofit business conducting its operations within a residential house. The appellant is requesting reversal of the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three zoning administrator's determination. The appellant raises two primary issues, the first being the Pover- excuse me, the Poverello House classified as home occupation adult daycare per the determination is required by the UDC to obtain a license from ADHS. Poverello House does not provide services that qualify as adult daycare and therefore cannot be licensed by ADHS. The second issue, uh, raised by the appellant is per UDC Section eleven point four point nine. A home occupation is defined as, quote, "a land use activity carried out for financial gain by a resident on the residence property conducted as an accessory use to the family dwelling or mobile home dwelling use on the property," end quote. The Poverello House is a nonprofit charity operated by a board of volunteers, none of whom live on the property and therefore does not align with the definition of a home occupation, nor is the use able to comply with the UDC Sections four point nine point seven point E and F. General standards and daycare standards of a home occupation. Planning and Development Services recommendation. Given that Poverello House is limited to ten persons per day, operated by residents as an accessory use to a family dwelling and no lodging or healthcare services are provided, and that ADHS does not require licensing for the use and that adult daycare as defined in the UDC does not identify treatment or healthcare services as a descriptor, staff recommends upholding the zoning administrator's determination. To date, we have received a total of nine letters supporting the appeal, two outside of the notice area, and fifty-six letters opposing the appeal, fifty-three of those being. And fifty six letters opposing the appeal, fifty three of those being outside of the notice area. For the record. Board members have been provided copies of the letters. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this concludes staff presentation, but I do believe there is a brief PowerPoint to share on this case as well.
Here, why don't you go forward with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I am just going to walk through a few items on this one because we do not see. Appeals of determinations happen very often, so I'd just like to give a little bit of grounding and framework to help. Guide the conversation and provide some history. Next slide, please. So the Poverello House of Tucson had an original location on Lee Street. They had a letter issued by Planning and Development Services in two thousand and ten. Which identified that proposed use on the Lee Street property as a home occupation adult daycare and. After some discussions with the Poverello House, I believe they had been trying to retrofit that prior location and couldn't do so and. To meet their needs and so they identified a new location, which is the property on Blackledge. They requested a letter or an interpretation letter from me as zoning administrator in the fall of twenty twenty two. At which time I issued a very similar letter to what was existing at the Lee Street property identifying this as a home occupation adult daycare use. Both locations and in both of those letters, there were conditions placed regarding the limit on the number of persons, adverse impacts, outdoor activities, alley use. And meals provided. To give you some framework, the Poverello House basically has residents who live there and they provide daytime hospitality services. For up to ten homeless individuals each day. It includes access to meals, showers, laundry, a respite area, a place to watch TV. Other things that may be typically required in some other uses such as overnight stays, counseling or medical or mental health treatment are not provided. As part of their services. Next slide, please. After the original letter was issued to the Poverello House at their request in the fall of last year. A neighbor, Ms. Lori Clark, who is the appellant in this case, requested a formal zoning administrator determination. Regarding this issue. To clarify, the original letter to the Poverello House was not a formal determination. It was an interpretation of the code and how they could proceed. Ms. Clark requested a formal determination, which is allowed per the code. And in the highlighted sections, you can see it's used to determine substantive provisions of the UDC. And as part of it, they must cite the ordinance or sections of the code. That require a determination or a clarification. So in other words, the determination that's issued by the zoning administrator is a direct response to their identified question. And their identified sections of the code. Next slide, please. The request by Ms. Lori Clark or Lauren Clark, I'm sorry, in March of twenty twenty three was. That the adult daycare use is intended to be a healthcare service licensed by ADHS or the state licensing ag- agency. She also clarified her opinion that if homeless individuals are referenced as a distinct group, they should not be included. And the population is served by an adult daycare. She requested staff work directly with staff from ADHS to clarify and amend the language in the UDC. And contested that the Poverello House should not be classified as an adult daycare nor permitted in the proposed location. In response to her letter, I issued a formal determination, which we can see on the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. And just to clarify before we jump to that. At the crux of this issue regarding the determination request. Is the role of the zoning administrator in determining an appropriate use for something that does that is not defined in the UDC. So you'll see in Article eleven three one B, that essentially the zoning administrator shall determine the most appropriate land use class for that use. And such a determination is an administrative decision. That was the original decision issued to the Poverello House. Which then triggered the determination request. Next slide, please. As part of the determination, I did research into the Unified Development Code and looked at a number of uses. I've put some of them on the screen for you here, so you can understand the thought process. This is also outlined in the determination letter itself. To clarify how we would look at this in this situation. Because the Poverello House does not necessarily fit into any defined use in the UDC. My role as zoning administrator is to determine the appropriate class. I looked at a daycare, which is defined very broadly. A daycare can also consist of a subcategory of an adult daycare as seen on the screen. I also looked at the definition for a home occupation, which specifies that it's a land use activity carried about. About on the residence property. It has to be an accessory use to a dwelling. And I also looked at residential care services, which is another category we have in the UDC. In which shelters and other kinds of residential facilities typically fall. During the determination review. It was my judgment that because of the type of operations that are proposed, that there are residents living on the property. That the use is accessory. That there are limits placed upon that use in a reasonable manner and that the closest. Correct use might be an adult daycare. It was my determination that that would be the correct use. Next slide, please. Ms. Clark in her determination request highlighted two specific things that I outlined in response to that determination. That specifically, when you have a home occupation adult daycare. One of the standards does state in the UDC that licensing is required by the Arizona Department of Health Services. I did contact them and ask them if the proposed operation of the Poverello House would require a license and they. Informed me that it would not because there are not medical residential services being provided. I will just provide a somewhat granular little bit of information that's kind of essential in this determination. An adult daycare can exist in a commercial zone and in a residential zone. And it can be a home occupation or it could be a standalone commercial use in a commercial zone. In commercial zones, there is not a requirement from licensing from ADHS. But when you look at it in a residential zone, that that item is listed as a requirement. I think in my interpretation of the code, that is because in a residential zone in a home occupation situation. It is grouped with the same as a child daycare facility and so that standard was meant to apply more in the child. Circumstance and not in an adult situation. And that is supported by the fact that in a commercial setting, you do not require a license for an adult daycare use. As defined by the UDC, I will also mention that. The UDC can. Require things that are different than the state. Our definitions and how we look at uses do not necessarily have to align. The second item from Ms. Clark was that if homeless individuals are referenced as a distinct group, they should not be included in a population served by the adult care. Specifically because a shelter care use is a residential use and does highlight homeless individuals in that definition. But it was determined that was not an appropriate use because shelter care is a residential use and in this case, the use is not. And I think that inclusion of homeless individuals in the shelter care definition does not preclude them from being served elsewhere. Just because they are mentioned in a shelter care use. She also requested that staff work directly with ADHS to amend the language in the code and as I outlined in my determination. Those code amendments need to be initiated by the mayor and council. That's certainly something that we could bring to their attention. As we move forward, but at this time, we are unable to initiate an amendment to clarify any language in the code. Next slide, please. In conclusion, it's my determination as zoning administrator. That the Poverello House be considered a home occupation adult daycare use based upon the authority granted by the Unified Development Code. Who determine the most appropriate land use class for an undefined use and I will state. It is the closest. It is not a perfect fit. And ideal and. Incidental to that, there's also lack of evidence supporting an adult daycare use is a healthcare service use. It's not outlined as such in the Unified Development Code. And that residential care services are not applicable. We're asking the board whether to uphold or reverse the determination. The appellant is asking for reversal of the determination from April. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, well, thank you. It's a lot to digest, but at this point, I don't have any questions. I may. Have a question or two for you, Ms. Hamblin, after I hear from the. The appellant. How about any other board member? Are there any questions at this point? Okay. Well, there is one from Ms. Pollus.
Uh, let's see. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I had asked this previously in study session. Is there a definition of soup kitchen in the UDC? And does the serving of food to individuals. Who are not part of your family require a license in the city of Tucson?
The question that was asked in the study session was regarding the definition of soup kitchen. There is a definition. It's a subcategory of food service. Food service is what we generally call any kind of restaurant cafeteria, coffee shop. A Starbucks, any of those things would be food service. Its definition is the preparation and sale of food primarily for consumption as a meal on or off of premises. And then it describes the typical uses as restaurants, coffee shops, cafeterias and fast food establishing establishments. The subcategory of soup kitchen within food service is a food service use that provides free meals for conception on or off site.
And does the soup kitchen require a permit to serve food?
If they were. Yes, they would require review and probably a business license and approval by the city.
Ms. Pollus, are you? Are you satisfied? Okay.
Yes, she answered.
Any other hands up? I will turn to the appellant at this point. And that is Lauren Clark is. Lori Clark, okay.
You can call me Lori.
I'll call you by your real name. Could you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Lori Clark. My address is two thirty six East Blackledge Drive.
Okay. And you are appealing the decision that's been made. Could you discuss what is behind that appeal?
I have a presentation and it's, we actually have a three-part presentation and we'd like to start with Mr. Standing. And then I'll do a bit and then my neighbor will do a bit.
Okay, we want to. Provide all the time you need, but we want to make sure. We don't go too, too long and we'd like to make sure there isn't repetition. So if you've got it, if you're on the same page as that, let's go forward and Mr. Standing. Now, why don't I swear you in with, who is the next party?
Jane Evans, both are on the screen.
Okay, I see two hands up. So do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Standing, you're the next speaker. Or the first speaker after the preliminary comments. Why don't you state your name and address?
My name is James Standing. I'm, I reside at thirty eight zero one North Swan Road. In Tucson, eight five seven one eight.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as I just stated, my name is James Standing. I have been an attorney for nearly twenty four years. After I was retained by Lauren Clark and Jane Evans and introduced to this case. Two things eventually became clear to me. This dispute is. Rests on it being illogical. When residents near the Lee Street location first complained in two thousand and eight that a. That the Poverello House was operating a soup kitchen. The zoning administrator at that time. Issued his zoning compliance letter finding that Poverello House was operating as a home occupation adult daycare establishment. Well, it wasn't. And I'll explain why. It wasn't. Either a home occupation and it wasn't adult daycare. It wasn't home occupation because according to my information. The people who resided there were employees. Of the Poverello House. I don't think that fits. The home occupation definition. But their activities were not adult daycare. Adult daycare is not limited to healthcare. It is, adult daycare is defined as providing services to a vulnerable population. And those services include. Assistance with what is known as activities of daily living. Those activities of daily living include toileting. Showering, that is, having assistance with showering. And does include food. Providing food to those persons. However. Neither that zoning administrator nor the subsequent. Zoning administrators required that the Poverello House obtain a license from the Arizona. Department of Health Services. This is clearly required in the statute. It's not ambiguous. There's only one exception. And that is when with cases involving four or fewer persons per day. The Poverello House, as Ms. Hamblin stated. Seeks to serve ten persons. It's, it's, that's the first point. That's the first thing that became clear to me that it was basically. In a logic, it's in a logical conflict. It doesn't make sense to me. But the perpetuation of the mistake. Seems to me to undermine an important statutory scheme. Which concerns public health. Earlier this year, Ms. Hamblin, in her determination letter. Relied on UDC article eleven point three point one point B in determining the most appropriate land use class. She found that daycare, adult daycare is permitted in areas zoned R two. She's found that the Poverello House did not need to be licensed by the Department of Health Services even. If designated home occupation adult daycare because the licensing requirement. Applies primary primarily to childcare. And adult daycare is not analogous. To adult day healthcare. There is no support in the UDC for either of these points. They have each been refuted by the Department of Health Services. It appears to me that Ms. Hamblin. With good intentions, of course, seemed to. Grab. A piece of the law and fit it to the activity. What what further confused me is that the Poverello House never claimed to be. Adult daycare. They just began operation on a seek forgiveness basis. In the event somebody complained or they recited. They, they did receive a complaint. And the zoning administrator at that time. Issued a letter. That said, well, you're good. You're in compliance. You're a home occupation adult daycare. It's my opinion that the zoning administrator's determination is reversible. And with that, I'd like to turn. Time over to. Appellate Lori Clark, who is a licensed architect.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Standing. Ms. Clark, if you're speaking next, why don't you proceed?
Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the board, good afternoon. My husband and I live at two thirty six East Blackledge Drive directly across the street from the project in question. The case before you today is about home occupation adult daycare. Poverello House is an organization that provides meals, shower facilities, laundry facilities. And areas to charge a phone, watch TV, take a nap. They serve up to ten homeless men a day. They serve up to ten homeless men a day and they are not an overnight facility. The, this determination classifies this use as home occupation adult daycare. I find that to be a real head scratcher. The reason is because I'm an architect and I've had the rare opportunity to work as the project architect on an adult daycare facility. Also, my eighty-eight-year-old mother attends adult daycare three times a week. So I understand what adult daycare is and what it is not. Additionally, I find the designation of home occupation puzzling because this is a facility operated by staff and the use is not secondary to the primary use of providing respite to homeless men. I do not bring this appeal lightly. I'm aware there are a whole bunch of feelings surrounding this case. But this case is about facts and not feelings. I am a former Ward Three appointee to the Board of Adjustments. And I served for eight years. I know that your decision must be based on the law and, and the facts relevant to the law. And I will do my best to present the facts explaining why this determination is an error. If you give me a moment, I'll share my screen and share my slides and get started on the facts. Hey, can you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, before I get started, I wanted to let you know that um, I provided links at the bottom of the slides and code references as needed. Um, and there is a short link at the bottom of this slide if you'd like to access that. That's uh, surrounding the regulations about adult daycare. So what is adult daycare? In the state of Arizona, adult daycare is regulated and licensed by the Arizona Department of Health Services. Adult daycare is known by lots of names. For example, my mom's place is called a Day Club. But it is a licensed adult day healthcare facility in the state of Arizona. Licensor for adult daycare is two parts. The facility must be licensed and the program must be licensed. And the definition of adult daycare is really pretty simple. Adult day health services means a program that provides planned care, supervision, and activities, personal care, personal living skills training, meals and health monitoring in a group setting during a portion of a continuous twenty-four hour period. This is a city of Tucson's definition for adult daycare. Daycare is the umbrella term that covers both adult daycare and childcare. And the definition is eerily similar to the state's definition. Daycare is a use providing care, supervision, planned activities, or guidance on a regular basis for periods of less than twenty-four hours for persons not related to the operator. This includes both adult daycare and childcare. Sub to that heading, which is kind of broad, there is adult daycare. And adult daycare is specifically for a, uh, elderly and disabled adults. The zoning administrator mentions that the definition under commercial services four point nine point four point B point one, adult daycare, which is actually different than the rules surrounding this case, does not require the, does not include a requirement for licensure. I would like to point out that our zoning code is also sadly lacking in noting the requirements for A D H licensure for other facility types such as residential behavioral health facilities and adult residential care facilities. But that doesn't mean that they get a pass from the requirements for licensure. You've heard me mention already the term adult daycare and the term adult day healthcare. The, the zoning administrator has said that she doesn't believe adult daycare is analogous to adult day healthcare. So I asked, is, I asked A D H S, is the term adult daycare in the state of Arizona considered to be synonymous with the term adult day healthcare? Simple answer, yes. The zoning administrator has said that she interprets a licensing requirement for daycare, which includes child and daycare to apply only to childcare because it is very heavily regulated by the state. It is true that adult daycare is nowhere near as common as childcare. And that our zoning code has extensive rules surrounding childcare. But lack of familiarity with uh, an activity does not mean that licensure is not required or that an activity is not heavily regulated. Again, there's a short link at the bottom and I'd encourage you to access that link because it links to the regulations surrounding adult daycare. This is a very condensed version and it is eight pages long. Who is served by adult day, daycare? I'd like to first start with childcare because it's a subheading. Childcare is a daycare for children fourteen years or younger. That's a vulnerable group. We can all agree. Adult daycare is a daycare for elderly or disabled adults, another vulnerable group. It doesn't include the whole adult population. It's very specific. The question about who is served is important because the zoning administrator has argued that the populate, the homeless population is is not distinct from the group described by adult daycare. I one thousand percent agree with that. If this facility, however, were serving elderly and disabled homeless adults, it could be licensed as an adult daycare facility. But home, Poverello House does not distinguish based on age or ability. Rather, the only criteria is being male and being homeless. This is categorically different than the population served by adult daycare. The state of Arizona, I think, has a little more progressive uh, uh, view of who is served by adult daycare. And they talk about um, the people who are served maybe are the people who need assistance with activities of daily living. And when I asked the Department of Health Services if this use would be considered adult daycare, they replied, most adult day health facilities serve the elderly population. However, our rules do not specify they have to be elderly. Homeless individuals would qualify if, and I want to put a big box around the word if, if they are in need of assistance with activities of daily living. I E, personal care services, which are defined by the Department of Health Services as assistance with activities of daily living, eating, assistance with toileting, medication management, et cetera. What are activities of daily living? Activities of daily living are widely used and utilized in the healthcare field. You can Google the term and tons of information will pop up. But the term activities of daily living or A D Ls refers to the basic tasks of everyday life such as eating, bathing, toileting, dressing, and transferring. When people are unable to perform these activities, they need help in order to cope, either from other human beings or mechanical devices or both. Although persons of all ages may have problems with performing the A D Ls, prevalence rates are much higher for the elderly than the non-elderly. Within the elderly population, A D L prevalence rates rise steeply with advancing age and are especially high for persons eighty, aged eighty-five and over. Does adult daycare require licensure? This determination require, classifies this use as home occupation adult daycare. And this is a code section that applies to this use. Per U D C four point point nine point seven point F point six, the daycare use shall be approved and licensed by the Arizona Department of Health Services prior to final approval. Again, recall that the umbrella term that includes both that of daycare includes both childcare and adult daycare. This code language has been in place since at least the early nineties. It was in the land use code and it was carried over to the Unified Development Code. Language is as plain as a nose, nose on your face and no special interpretations are required to understand it. When I asked the Department of Health Services if adult daycare requires licensure, yes, adult day healthcare requires a license. You can view the rules and regulations here and they provided a link. Is Poverello House providing adult daycare? Simply, they are not providing adult daycare. The litmus test is licensure and they cannot get licensed. They cannot complete that whole checklist. Um, and that, you know, it's just that their services are not daycare. If you are providing adult daycare in the state of Arizona, you must be licensed by the Arizona Department of Health Services. The zoning administrator recognizes that Poverello House cannot be licensed by A D H S and has used this fact to suggest that they don't need to be licensed. That ignored, that logic ignores the fact that our own code requires licensure. You cannot have it both ways. If there are any questions about which code takes precedence, our code is very specific. Per U D C one point six point three, no provision of the U D C shall be construed as relieving any party to whom U D C compliance approval is issued from any other provision of county, state, or federal law. Basically, what this is saying is that you don't get a pass from the requirements of the state. And licensure of adult daycare is required by the state of Arizona. Are there exceptions to the rule? Yes, there is one exception. When you have five or more adults, you are considered adult daycare. When you have four or fewer adults, you do not need to be licensed. The zoning administrator has used a section of the code eleven point three point one point B that allows the zoning administrator to determine the most appropriate land use when a land use doesn't exist. Poverello House serves free meals for consumption on-site along with some extra services like shower and laundry facilities, making this look like a top drawer soup kitchen. And I would argue that he, that the use did exist and that soup kitchen is the most appropriate fit for this use. I gotta say, the requirements are, are listed below and item four, they are an easy lift for an organization like this. There's nothing um, tricky uh, about this. Calling this use, however, home occupation adult daycare truly is fitting a square peg into a round hole. It is not my call to determine the land use, but I do not understand why this use was not considered. Because provision of free meals is integral to Poverello House services. Licensed adult daycare facilities may serve food. And if you, again, that short link and you can see all the regulations surrounding food service. But food made in a residential kitchen is heavily regulated by the state of Arizona and by the Pima County Department of Health. The privilege of making food in a residential kitchen and serving it to the public is very, very limited. And that's for public health reasons. On May third, Poverello House received a certified letter from the Pima County Department of Health ordering them to immediately stop serving food. They've been closed ever since. Home occupation is a land use activity carried out for financial gain by a resident on the resident's property conducted as an accessory use to the family dwelling or mobile home used dwelling on the property. Poverello House residents are staff who come and go and this use is not for their gain. Poverello House activities are the primary activity for this use. This is a charity using a house as a storefront and enjoying all of the benefits afforded to home occupation adult daycare. Drilling down a bit further, the home occupation rules make it very, very clear that the use must be secondary to the residential use of the dwelling. There is nothing about this use that I personally see as secondary and I believe that any reasonable person would agree that the two twenty-one East Lee Street facility was leased and operated for the sole purpose of providing Poverello House services. On May fifteenth of this year, the U D C was amended. There were two changes that were not advertised and occurred during the red, red line process that directly affect this case. The first change was to remove the requirement of one person at a time. In my mind, this change is not problematic because it allows real adult daycare to make money. The second change was to amend the language surrounding licensure by adding the words if required by A D H S. If this determination is overturned, this language is not problematic because it recognizes that there is an exception, which is when there are four or fewer adults being served. However, if this determination is allowed to stand, it opens a can of worms for the city. Because anyone providing services to adults could call themselves adult daycare, enjoy all the benefits afforded to adult daycare and use this determination as precedence. And really, who wants to get a license if you don't have to? I don't believe that the intention of home occupation adult daycare is to allow any business serving adults to set up a storefront and call themselves, call themselves home occupation adult daycare. This use is meant for a very specific and vulnerable group. Elderly and disabled adults who require assistance with the activities of daily living. This arbitration or this determination is arbitrary and capricious because it does not take the very basic facts into account. The term adult daycare is synonymous with the term adult day healthcare in the state of Arizona. Adult daycare is very heavily regulated in the state of Arizona. A D H S and the U D C both require that adult daycare be licensed and the only exception is when there are four or fewer adults being served. The zoning code does not afford relief from the regulations of the state of Arizona. Poverello House is not providing adult daycare services and as such, they cannot be licensed by the state of Arizona. Adult daycare is for elderly or disabled adults. It is not for the general population. Poverello House has been ordered by the Pima County Department of Health to stop serving food from a residential kitchen. This use aligns perfectly with soup kitchen. This use is operated by staff and it is not for the gain of staff and the charity use is not secondary to the residential use as required by home occupation rules. Poverello House has been operating in a different neighborhood since two thousand and eight. And they hope to do a rinse and repeat in my neighborhood. They have not moved in or started operations yet. As you know, the use is linked to the property and not to the user. It is a time for a reset and it's time to make this right. Poverello House has been operating under the cover of adult daycare without being licensed as required by our own Tucson zoning code. Poverello House has been serving food illegally out of a house since two thousand and eight. This use looks a lot like a very nice soup kitchen. Poverello House has been operating a charity using a house as a storefront under the cover of home occupation. This use is non-viable as home occupation adult daycare. There are more appropriate uses and suitable uses for their activities. The facts in this case are straightforward and the zoning administrator abused the discretion afforded by the code in making this determination and I respectfully request that the board overturn this decision. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Clark, thank you very much. Uh, quite a thorough presentation and I think everybody um, understood what you were saying. Uh, we have one more speaker. I want to move to that third speaker. And uh, hopefully it's not going to take as long as the last presentation took. Um, and so we can uh see what others have to say after that, but uh, uh, the gentleman has been sworn in. Could you state your name and your address?
This time it's me.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, go ahead. State your name and, and, and your address.
Mister Chairman and members of the board, I am Jane Evans. My husband and I live at twenty-nine forty-five North Fontana as we have for thirty-four years. Our property is across the street from the proposed Poverello House project. We have also owned and operated our licensed business two blocks away for thirty-six years. I've been an active member of our neighborhood association since its inception in nineteen ninety-three. I have had leadership roles in our association and have worked with city departments and our ward office for thirty years. We've always had a reputation as a neighborhood that was easy to work with and we got things done. A day use that serves homeless men, men only, is threatening to change the residential character of our neighborhood forever. Not one of the immediate neighbors was asked what they thought about this day use before the property was bought. In fact, not one neighbor in the entire neighborhood was asked what they thought until the property belonged to the Poverello House. When you look at the petitions in our exhibits, neighbors do not want this proposed project to happen. We have established with the facts, this is not a home occupation. We have established with facts, this is not adult daycare. I'm really frustrated with this zoning decision because it's plain this is not adult daycare. If you lived across the street from a real adult daycare facility, you would not open your bedroom window and see ten men lining up to be let into a facility. Yet that's exactly what two women neighbors, each in different houses, across the street from the proposed Poverello House would see. Both have said they wouldn't feel safe. At a real adult daycare facility, caregivers would drive up to the home, drop off their loved one, friend, or caree. The caregiver would leave this person with the comfort of knowing they would be in the hands of qualified licensed employees. Later, that caregiver would return and pick up their caree and they would continue to their home. This proposed facility would serve homeless men. The volunteers at this facility would come, they'd work their shift, they'd talk to the homeless men and then go home to their private residences and feel good about how they spent their day. The homeless men would leave and they'd go into our neighborhood. This property sits directly on the route to and from Keeling Elementary School as well as Amphi Middle School. According to the Tucson Pima Collaboration to End Homelessness twenty twenty Report on Homelessness in Pima County, their report states, the percentage of adults with serious mental illness who are unsheltered rose to fifty-three point two percent in twenty twenty. Young kids and homeless men are not a good combination. We would all be naive to think that none of the homeless men going to the Poverello House would fit into this category. Many, many letters have been sent in that support this project. I want to be sure you understand that fifty-three of those letters were written by volunteers of the Poverello House. Those fifty-three people live, do not live in our neighborhood. They live in Oro Valley. They live in the Tucson Mountains, not even within the city limits. They live on the east side of Tucson and some don't even live in this state. Not one letter, not one letter addressed the issue here. Not one letter explained why the Poverello House should be considered a home occupation adult daycare facility. In fact, the letter from the Poverello House Board called the two men that would live in the house staff. A real home occupation would have residents, not paid employees living in the home. In contrast to the letters of support for the Poverello House, you have in our exhibits a petition signed by one hundred percent of the immediate neighbors. This petition says these neighbors do not believe the Poverello House is adult daycare. I want to stress this point. All seven of the immediate households, those that abut the property and those that are adjacent to two sixty-seven East Blackledge, signed this petition. You can also see on the petition, most of us have lived on our properties for decades. This fact is important to notice. It's also important to note that one of the letters received is from one of the neighbors that abuts this property. Agnes Poor wrote a detailed letter why she believes this use does not align with adult daycare. Ms. Poor is one of the founders of Casa de la Luz Hospice, a very well-known facility in Tucson. Ms. Poor is very familiar with rules and regulations regarding licensing requirements for facilities dealing with elderly and disabled adults. Her letter is important to note. The board you're sitting on was made for exactly a situation like this. You as volunteers are being asked to read the code, listen to what the code says and make a determination based on facts, not opinion, not emotion. As I said before, we have shown you the facts. Arizona Department of Health Services sent us an email telling us and now you and the exhibits can see that adult daycare, adult day health services, adult day clubs, day treatment for adults, whatever name that's put to it, these facilities require a license to operate. I don't understand why the zoning determination was made when a soup kitchen use is so clearly aligned with this project. Thank you for taking the time to read our appeal and thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you very much. I have one question I want to ask of the three of you, although it seems like it was touched upon by the third speaker, maybe the second speaker, and that is, can you speak to the residents of the house in question? Uh, I think the third speaker spoke of them as employees. And first of all, are those people occupying the house at this point?
I'll speak up. They haven't moved into the house that is across the street from me yet. The people who operate, you know, daily services for, for Poverello House are described in your letters that you received as staff. And whether they are paid or not, I don't know if they get a roof over their head or what. But they, they are not the masterminds behind this operation. They come and go. They're, they're not, it's not like you as an owner operating a business. It's like you having your employees operate a business.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you. I think, you know, we may come back to that point, but I think that is, uh, is what I need at this point. So you've all taken a lot of time and you've all covered the subject quite thoroughly. But I'm not sure that you speak for everybody, uh, who is in the virtual audience. So let me just ask, or is there anybody else that is here to speak to this one case? But I see things are floating around here. You're all moving and I, if you stand still for a second, I see two hands. Um, I see a Mr. Bauer and then a Mr. McDermott and I see Ms. Armquest. Are those the, the names of the three people that wish to speak on this case?
I see additional hands raised, uh, including my own, Jean Allen.
Jean Allen up there. Katie Bolger and CJ Boyd. Okay, wow. So I don't know the order, but, uh, Mr. Bauer's still got his hand up. Why don't you, uh, speak first and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Brother David Buer. I'm currently assigned at San Javier Mission in Tucson, but I'm currently living with my mom for a couple of months, the, my ninety-one-year-old mom in St. Louis. But I, I'm, so I'm here via Zoom from Missouri, but I am assigned at Saint, San Javier Mission.
Okay, why don't you, uh, tell us what you came to, uh, to say?
Uh, I'm, I'm the founder of Poverello House. We began, uh, as, as was stated in two thousand and eight. And I have a two-minute statement to, uh, to, to make. Poverello House is a house of hospitality to allow its guests one day a week off of the streets in a home-like setting. We are not a soup kitchen. We are not a drop-in center. Each guest is an invited guest, assigned a particular day of the week to come. We limit the number of guests to come in each day. We've known some of our guests for many years. We have served our invited guests for fifteen years in a respectful, neighborly way. We have been a good neighbor, capable of responding to the concerns of our neighbors. In two thousand and ten, we hosted meetings with Ward Three staff and neighbors, successfully negotiating protocols that we, that we have honored for the last decade. We have been a good neighbor. The COVID-nineteen pandemic caused us to completely close the house in March twenty twenty until August twenty twenty. Wanting to be of some service to our guests, with the encouragement of our supporters and city officials, we reopened our doors in a limited way that summer of twenty twenty. Guests were only allowed in the outside yards with reduced hours. We rented a porta potty and used two outdoor washing machines and built an outside shower. This was all we could offer for the next year. Later in two thousand and twenty-two, as the COVID-nineteen threat lessened, we were able to reopen the houses. These months were challenging for us, but we were able to remain open. Now we are poised, once the renovation of the Blackledge House is completed, to reopen to serve our invited guests. We are grateful for our supporters and are respectful to those who oppose us. Poverello House is a Franciscan-inspired ministry. We are not a business. We strive to be a place where our guests feel welcome. Our scripture passage that guides us is from Matthew twenty-five. What you do to the least of my brothers and sisters, you do unto me. And as we prepare for this major transition to a new neighborhood, we are prepared to be good neighbors. We wish everyone peace and all good.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. Um, I don't have any questions for you. Uh, is there a board member that has a question for Mr. Bauer? Then I want to thank you again and let me, uh, move to Ms. Armquest. Could you raise your right hand? And where are you on the screen now? Okay. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Well, if I can unmute myself, I will.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
I do, I do swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, but I have to state that probably a lot of what I'm going to say is opinion. But it is my opinion.
Okay, well, that's fine. State your name again and, uh, your address, please.
Jack Armquest. I live at three seven one five West Placita Rancho, Saguaro.
Okay, I'm going to ask you as well as I'm going to ask everybody that will be speaking after this on this case to please be brief. I don't mean to cut anybody off prematurely, but, uh, I do want to move through the last uh, series of, uh, uh, commenters, uh, as quickly as we can because we're spending a lot of time on the case, but but please, uh, tell us.
Okay, well, I would like to, I would like to start out by clarifying, um, the relationship of staff. The, we do pay our staff people minimum wage and we deduct the fair market rent from, from their, uh, from their, from their paycheck. Um, the staff are not exactly people who come and go. The staff that were being paid the week that we closed down had been with us since two thousand and sixteen. So I just wanted to clarify that. I, this is where opinion comes in. I think the primary issue really is about feelings, not about facts. The feeling that the neighbors have that the unhoused men will be a threat to the safety of people in the neighborhood, particularly children. If Poverello House were, say, for example, if the guys who rented it invited their friends in to watch cat videos and play ping pong, I don't think anybody would care. It's about who the guests are. Our guests are unhoused. Uh, they come in being unkempt. And even though they're not, they're not, they are unable to use bathroom, shower, eat good food because they don't have access to it. We don't give them a shower. We give them a chance to get a shower. Let's see, I have all, all this stuff all written out and I'm probably not going to read it because it's, it's going to take too long. But I want to say that Poverello House has operated for fourteen, almost fifteen years. In October, it'll be fifteen years on Lee Street. There has occasionally been a problem, but the problem was resolved. No one was injured, no one was hurt, no one was threatened. The problem isn't Poverello House. The problem is that there are not enough places like Poverello House. And that's what I have to say.
Okay, let me just ask you a question, uh, just for clarification because I didn't understand this at the very beginning of your comments, but your comments, uh, refer to our staff. And I believe you're referring to the people that would be living in the Poverello House.
They, 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 they are live-in staff and one, one of them is currently, um, living in the house, uh, at Blackledge, um, at the other one, the other staff person that we had at the time that we closed down has retired.
So you're part of the organization that owns the Poverello House?
I'm, I'm the treasurer of the board.
Okay, okay, very good. Um, that answers my question. Thank you. Let me just bring that up. Let me move on and you all got jumbled a little bit. It was a gentleman. Kyle McDermott is up there. Why don't you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, why don't you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Kyle McDermott. Uh, my address is two two eight East Blackledge. I am just one house outside of the four hundred-foot zone, um, that was impacted or that was required to be notified about the Poverello House, um, zoning determination decision, um, and this appeal. I was born in Keeling neighborhood, so, um, just around the corner. Actually, my mom still lives around the corner. My mother has also volunteered for the Poverello House, um, helping, um, assist there for, for over a decade. Um, so I've been familiar with the Poverello House, have, um, you know, also volunteered there, um, from time to time. Um, I recently moved back to Tucson, um, after pursuing graduate studies in Washington and, and purchased a house around the corner, um, from where I grew up, which is where I reside now. Um, I, I've gotten involved with the Neighborhood Association. I'm currently on the board and co-chair the, the board of the Keeling Neighborhood Association. Um, and I've also, um, since this, this issue with the Poverello House has come up, have joined the, the board of the Poverello House. Um, my approach to that has been that, um, I think working with the Poverello House, um, and actually having conversations with them to, uh, ensure that their operations, um, uh, you know, address neighbors' concerns, um, has been my approach. So, um, I haven't shut them out or, um, you know, refused, uh, conversations with them. I've actually joined the board and, um, tried to relay the, the feedback and the concerns that I've, um, heard from, from various folks in the neighborhood. Uh, and I think that's been a very, um, effective, uh, position for me to, to be in. So, so, um, I kind of, I'm wearing a few different hats, um, I acknowledge that. Um, and I, I think one of the things that, um, was, was really missing from this whole appeal process to me was, um, the actual perspective of, of homeless people. Um, you know, there were letters from various people, you know, both, um, supporting and, um, uh, not in support of the Poverello House. Um, as far as I know, folks that were, um, uh, in support of the appeal, so not in support of the Poverello House were, uh, predominantly homeowners. Um, I, I did see the list. They're predominantly homeowners. Um, and some of those, looking at, at the names, you know, I can't tell for sure, but it, it seemed as though those homeowners were mostly, um, Caucasian. Um, we live in a, uh, predominantly Hispanic neighborhood where, um, eighty-four percent uh, of folks make, um, thirty-five thousand dollars or less a year as their house income. So there was something a little bit off here about this, um, this, uh, these, these, uh, folks who were, um, opposing, uh, this home of shelter is that they were mostly white homeowners opposing a, um, a, a shelter for the lowest-class citizens in our community. Um, and it, it felt like maybe there was some, some classism, uh, kind of showing itself here. Um, and I also noticed that, um, yeah, one, one other important fact is that, uh, homeless, uh, homeless, the homeless community is predominantly BIPOC, so Black Indigenous and people of color. So then I started asking myself, wow, you know, these, these predominantly white homeowners are, are, uh, seem to be, um, you know, we're making these statements about fears of these folks, you know, attacking children and, and, and the risk that they oppose to women. I'm not making any, any, um, uh, uh accusations. I'm just, these were things that were kinda coming up on, in my mind as thinking, you know, this, this is something that uh kinda reminds me of the racial, racial covenants that were um originally established in Tucson where uh, you know, um various neighborhood associations essentially kept black people primarily out of their neighborhood through things like neighborhood associations and so forth. So so thi- this, my role on the board of the uh Neighborhood Association, um, you know, this was something that kinda flagged to me, and I did some studies about did some personal study on um civil rights uh, uh law and, you know, looked at different examples of um cases where these covenants um were, were happening and the role that the Neighborhood Association did or didn't take in these cases. And in some cases, the Neighborhood Association um was um and, and this is where they had specific voting powers and so forth. They were actually held liable for not having intervened and um, you know, essentially stop these discriminatory practices. So I don't think that this is what is happening here. I don't think that we're, you know, legally liable as, as the board of the Neighborhood Association to intervene here, but there was sort of just a innate sense of, of um, you know, uh feeling like something was a little bit uncalled in terms of, you know, this whole thing about the zoning um appeal and, you know, what this was really about. Um, and so, um, because there have been a lot of statements that have been made um about the homeless community by the appellants. Um, you know, there's, they've submitted over a hundred and twenty pages of documents to uh as part of the appeal um, letters written to the mayor and council and so forth with many, many feelings, actually. So most of it is actually feelings and not facts. They're mostly um statements about the concerns of this community um and their potential harm toward toward women and children in the community. So I, I really kinda circling back here. Um, I, I wanted to get the perspective of um the homeless community. So I had been helping out at an encampment that had popped up on Geronimo, which is exactly one block from where the Pavarello House is currently located. Uh, the new, new location of Pavarello House is currently located. I had been going over there assisting um the folks by bringing them water and asking them if they needed, you know, what, what their needs were and trying to help meet really basic needs. This is, of course, during an extreme
Can I interrupt for a second? You, you, I, I'd, I'd like to ask you to focus in on what we're dealing with here, and this is an appeal of a zoning administrator's decision.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and if you can offer comments directly to what we're dealing with, uh dealing with today, that would be helpful.
Okay, sure, yeah. Um, so I'm directly, yeah, I, I am directly addressing the Appellants a hundred and twenty plate uh page um appeal um where numerous comments were made about um the um, the equating homelessness with the criminality, essentially. Um, are you, is that, are you following?
Yeah, I know, I'm not sure I heard that that statement that you, you say was, is in the appeal, but uh why don't you go, go ahead anyway?
Okay, I mean, did, can I, can I just ask a clarifying question? Has the board read the um all of the appeal documents during the study session?
Chairman Marks, we received all of the statements by, I'm sorry, I, I just wanna speak up. Chair Marks, we received a hundred-page document that contained all the letters supporting and opposing this appeal, and I believe the current speaker is uh directly addressing those concerns. Um, the appellant got twenty minutes, half an hour, something like that, to um, address their concerns, and I, I feel that in order to be equitable, we should afford the same space to other speakers.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're focused in on what we're doing here today. And so why don't you, you uh complete your comments, if you would?
I'm very aware of what's happening here and, 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 and very intent on addressing the um the, the comments and the statements made by the applicant. So I would like to play a video. Um, I um interviewed one of the folks at the encampment, and I asked them to respond to some of the um the statements that were made by the appellants. Um, this is a homeless individual who uh resides uh was living in this neighborhood about one block from
Could, could you just speak to what you wanna speak to without referring to a tape or anything, any other source? And I don't wanna cut you off, but, but just tell us what you what your comments are relative to the request, where the appeal that's been issued, because we have to make a decision on that appeal.
Just, just to Miranda's point, I mean, I, I would like to acknowledge the, the time um discrepancies. I, I believe uh Ms. Lauren Clark took about twenty minutes to provide her comment.
I'm not telling you to stop. I'm telling you to keep going and tell us what is pert- what, you know, speak to what's pertinent.
Yes, sir. Um, I would like to play the video, please. Um, I'll go ahead and share my screen.
How long is that gonna be?
Um, it's about six minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I will need access to share a screen.
Um, are you asking somebody from staff?
I believe so, yeah. I believe whoever the host is will need to provide that access.
Yes, we're doing that momentarily. Thank you.
That should be completed now. Thank you. What's your name?
Ralph Evans.
Uh, how long have you been homeless?
Uh, as long as I could
Is everyone able to see this okay and hear it okay?
Yes, we can see it.
Uh, what's your relationship to this neighborhood and where were you living before?
I was in, I was in two hills before this. I was in two hills before this on um the sunrise power. But then I moved down the hill here. Could be a little more, you know, too many people together. Then I found myself homeless. Come on, lost my apartment and uh, I was getting my new uh apartment coming down. I didn't, my mindset had changed. And maybe we're, we're speaking and my problems came up. And it was, of course, it was, it was down for it.
Um, what are some of your main needs out here?
Um, oh, chapter of course, uh, communication.
Okay, yeah.
Communication, um
So like, like, what do you mean by communication?
Phone, cell phone.
Cell phone, yeah.
And, and we tried, you know, tried to most important things with phone card.
Yeah.
It's not trying to
Right, right. Right, right, right. What else?
Um food, food, but it's not like uh you pop over the reason you can get some meat, you know, it's or something else, maybe a food chance, and you're lucky. If you don't, you gotta get on it, and that's
Right.
And that simply the wonder. It's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Say, it's, it's keep a few people alive, I know. And uh, food is, is, it's, it's a blessing. If you eat, it takes some worry out of it.
Right.
You know, you just stand, eat a hot soup and a sandwich, it's like, okay.
Yeah.
I'm ready, let's go, and you can battle on.
Right, right, right. If there was a place that provided you access to a home between nine and three P M. per day uh or two out of the week, where you could shower, wash clothes, have a meal, cool down, or warm up, depending on the time of year, charge your phone, et cetera, would this be beneficial for you at getting back on your feet?
Mm-hmm.
In what ways?
Um um, anyway, that just, for mentioning that, you know, I mean
You mentioned about washing your clothes before.
Oh, yeah, I mean, just feeling good about yourself.
Yeah.
I clean clothes and, and change, they're pretty, as you say.
Yeah.
It feels so much better, even more motivation. You might have to go out, find things and get things and get back. Because a lot of times it's just that if one thing happened, you start
Then have to charge your phone, right?
Yeah, charge your phone, get, communicate, you know, keep, keep someone where you be uh back in, because I tell you, it's too easy to check yourself out. You know, you're back on the hill, and you'll do another thing, you put yourself down, the floor's dirty, I don't feel good, and I'm hungry, different things. You know, placing that would be, could be awesome.
Uh, so some folks in the neighborhood say that places like this do not belong in our neighborhood um and should be placed on the outskirts of town in concrete facilities in industrial areas. What do you think about this? How does it make you feel?
You're gonna put us in jail.
Again.
I'm gonna put this way, lock us away somewhere, forget about us, and this is where, this is our community. This is where we're from, where we live. So she's taking us out of our, our homes, throw us away, and put us out, you know, and, and we leave somewhere, and, and there it is, not bad. Isn't that, you know, definitely hurt, and I heard us something, and I heard us, I mean, to think, I'm gonna kick, I remember putting some, just your parking lot is nothing, the people build, no person watching his daughter, you know, it's gonna be a down down ship, that, that.
So so, some folks in the neighborhood have made statements saying that homeless men specifically around them make them feel unsafe. Um, and that they're a safety issue for young girls in the neighborhood specifically. Uh, they said this about the, the homeless shelter, day shelter that, you know, they wanna open and that shelter is on the street that Amphi Middle School girls, you know, walk home from on, and so they've said things like the fact that homeless men would be leaving that shelter uh when the girls are walking by uh is concerning to them. How do you, how would you respond to that?
That's crazy, wasn't it? I tell you, I mean, what are we gonna turn to monsters or something, you know, we're homeless, so let's turn to like deviants and stuff, and say, no, I can't see just, you know, someone scared, you know, and a bunch of carrots, where it doesn't work.
Right.
We just, well, then I'm assuming it's not a, a bunch of uh, trick of demons being led out, and you, people who live here, and you just back you know, you know, a problem.
Right, right.
Other than that, it's, it's just too much.
Yeah, I mean, how does that make you feel? I mean
It's, it hurts.
Yeah.
It hurts if someone could just jump to conclude that I'm
Yeah.
be, you know, opening a new world and, you know, kinds of bad thoughts, you know, I mean
Yeah.
I'm trying to get my life together, I gotta go out and, and bet someone.
Yeah.
But you, I, I go to the top, you know.
Yeah, right.
Just, it hurts.
Yeah, any, any other things you want people to know or, or would, you know, feel as important to say?
Don't be scared of us, because we're not devils or demons or bad people, which is you, don't feel bad time. You look in the mirror, it's my face, yeah, I'm a bad one, I got twenty years in military, should be here.
Yeah.
But I had, I lived in Bristol, Rhode Island, and uh, coming out home, I lived, I just watched the Bristol parade and looking at, you know, so everything can happen, never know, so just trying to be a judge, got it, the judge just try to get along and help each other and keep back clearly, we need to be.
Great.
Ms. McDermott, is that uh, is that wrapping up?
It is, yeah. Just, there's just two quick, quick more slides here. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McDermott, thank you. Um, let me move on. We uh spent tremendous amount of time on this case. We've got three more hands that are up. Let me take them in from right to left. Jean Allen, is uh she there? And if she is, yep. Now you see the video now. Could you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Jean Allen. I live at two twenty-eight East Black Ledge Drive. Um, a short distance from um the location that the Pavarello House uh will occupy. And I've been a resident of the neighborhood for three years. I am currently a member of the um board of the Keeling Neighborhood Association in the role of uh our neighborhood advocate. Um, I'm here, um, you know, as a neighbor and, and as a private citizen. Um, but uh, mention that as a, just a, a a reflection of my engagement in, in the community and uh my, my commitment to um the Keeling neighborhood. And I wanna uh dispute the assertion by the appellant that um their case is about facts, not feelings. Um, I think they have let um their feelings guide them to the facts that um corroborate their feelings. Um, I appreciate the point um raised by um the uh original uh decision handed down by the city that um this is a use that does not fit into um any category perfectly, and therefore uh they have made the best determination possible um based on that, and um that uh carries weight with me. Um, I also wanna dispute the fact that neighbors um are not supportive of this. Um, there are um, of course, a range of opinions um in the neighborhood on this. Um, and I think that it's important to um that that's reflected in, in the record here. Um, the that's what I'll say on that. Um, the fact is that um homeless individuals um or men do not represent a greater risk than other members of our community. Um, they are more at risk um from violence than um to commit violence, so um, people may feel unsafe, but that is, again, a feeling that is not a fact. Um, today, um, one of the um people who spoke on behalf of the appellant um said that they thought that the fact that um there's a, a high percentage or that over fifty percent of um homeless individuals or people experiencing homeless hu- homelessness have mental health issues, that that somehow uh indicates that they are dangerous. I think that's highly insulting to anyone who's ever dealt with a mental health issue. Um, if you are clinically depressed, that's not make you dangerous to the community. Um, in fact, again, those suffering from mental health issues are more likely to be vulnerable to violence. Um, so those are our facts. Um, and again, um, returning to the nature of the determination, I think that um the services that the Pavarello House provides um in a setting and um the nature of with with which they invite people in um and provide them with dignity is quite um unique and um valuable to, to our community, to our neighborhood. And um, again, I think that the city has made the best determination based on its unique um nature. Thank you.
Let's see, thank you very much. Let me uh go to the box to the left, you've seen Bowler. You see President? Could you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name and, and address?
Uh, Katie Bolger, two ten East Linden. Um, and I wanted to speak as a neighbor. I've been living by the Pavarello House for over a decade. I live two blocks from them. Or I have lived two blocks from them when they were on Lee Street, and they were great neighbors, and we're sorry to see them go. Um, I also live in a neighborhood that has a lot of mini-dorms and out-of-state landlords and rentals. And I would say it's a lot safer living by Pavarello House, and they clean up, and they're great neighbors, and you compare that to the mini-dorms who have a right to live in our neighborhood, and we have drunk driving and loud parties and trash everywhere. So, wanted to throw that out there. Also, I'm a longtime volunteer at Costa Maria Soup Kitchen. And there is a huge difference between the soup kitchen and Pavarello House. Uh, the soup kitchen opens up at six A M. There's a line of people out the door till noon. They get their food. They, they eat around the area. Pavarello House, people are inside or on the front yard, very different um land use um definitions, I think. And I wanted to speak, um I heard the zoning examiner say earlier, and it was just repeated, that this is not a perfect fit, but it's the best determination, and I understand um the appellant was saying, no, it's an adult daycare. And that was the, how she was um arguing that. But the zoning examiner said this is the best, closest possible determination, and I agree with that. And they've been perfectly compatible in our neighborhood, and once again, sorry to see them go. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much. I'm gonna go to the last hand that's up. And that is Mr. Boyd. Uh, could you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, CJ Boyd, I live at two nineteen East Jacinto. It's about three blocks, maybe three or four blocks from the proposed site for the Pavarello House, also in the Keeling neighborhood. Um, thank you, and I'm gonna try to keep it very brief, I know we spent a lot of time on this. Um, I was sort of bothered to see so much time spent disputing that this is not, um, as others have said, a, a adult daycare, I think everyone knows that it's not a date, adult daycare center and that really as a city, we need to add this use into our code, um, so that we don't have to play this game, but um, I'm very supportive of Pavarello House being in the neighborhood and I, just a couple of things I want to say that haven't already been said, because lots of people submit great points. One is that I live in the neighborhood, there are a lot of unhoused folks in the neighborhood. There's, it's, I think the claim that some folks have that this is going to bring unhoused folks into the neighborhood is just factually not true. There's so many people already here who need services and I, I applaud um, Pavaro House and other folks who are doing this work to bring the services to those who need them that are already there, it's not a matter of importing unhoused folks on, on the corner that I live, I live on Austria and Jacinto. I mean, I just see traffic of folks all the time who are, who are having a rough time. Um, secondly, I just wanna say, um, there's, there, again, there were some claims about whether the neighborhood supports it, I, I'm not on the board of the Neighborhood Association, but I've been going to the meetings the last six months or so and have been really hardened by the support um, of the Neighborhood Association. Um, I work for the city and deal with neighborhood associations in a, in a different capacity and I wasn't sure about joining mine. Um, and it was really lovely to see all the compassion and love there that I've, that I've seen, experienced, not just towards each other, but towards, you know, the least of us, as uh, Brother David mentioned earlier, so. Um, I'm a big supporter and I've seen overwhelming support in the Neighborhood Association meetings. Um, last thing I'll say real quick and Katie um, touched on this. I don't know if the folks who are calling this a soup kitchen have ever been to a soup kitchen. My understanding, I mean, my experience has just been with Casa Maria um, on the south side and the South Tucson. The, the kind of, what you're serving is an entirely different thing, we're talking about, I mean, the idea of ten people a day. The idea that anyone would be op- opening a soup kitchen to just serve ten people a day is just kind of seems absolutely out of the question. So um, again, we all know that this is not a daycare, it's also not a soup kitchen, there's a lot of things it's not. Um, it's unfortunate that we don't have this specific use already put in our code, but given what we have to work with, um, I just, I appreciate the zoning administrator's determination and it makes sense to me, uh, is the closest that we could get. Thanks for your time.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, I appreciate all the time that is. Um, we heard from the petitioner, or I, let me correct myself, the appellant. And then uh, those uh, other individuals here that uh, spoke in favor as well as spoke in opposition uh, to the uh, activity. Um, I'm gonna afford one party uh, associated with the appellant to speak briefly, if you would like. That is uh, Laurie Sparks who uh, kinda organized the uh, appeal. And um, in a very few um, moments, uh, a couple minutes, we can do it the absolute greatest amount. Could you um, summarize the appeal? And could you, if you feel necessary, uh, could you, any other comments that have been made? Feel free to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Um, I would say, uh, just in summary, um, this use, the zoning code has requirements surrounding adult daycare and this use does not align with those requirements. Um, regarding the soup kitchen, the definition does align and that's, that's what the question is here. Um, and um, this is not about ten people, um, soup kitchen is not allowed in our zone. Um, we have, there's been a lot of comments about not having compassion. My neighbor Jane is working with another organization to assist homeless people around the corner, so um, we have compassion, but this use is not adult daycare. Um, it's not a home occupation, it looks very much like a soup kitchen and if they were in another location, they could have, uh, they could serve a lot of people. And as an architect, I would say soup kitchens don't have to be ugly, they can be awesome places and I, I know that this is like a soup kitchen on steroids. Um, but you know, design of a facility can be great and it can be a welcoming and wonderful place. And I will close it with that.
Okay, thank you and uh, thank you to everybody. Um, I'm gonna close the hearing and uh, turn it to the board members. Unless, is there a board member, Miss Paulus, wants to ask a question of one of the speakers?
I'd like to ask a question of staff. Um, is this kind of facility something that would be amenable to one of the special exception processes that are available for people who would like a permit to do something that's not adequately defined in the code?
Um, Mr. Chair and Ms. Paulus, um, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking if something like this would be eligible for a special exception? Um, special exceptions are specifically identified with specific uses, it's not a broad um, process that can be opted into when something doesn't fit. So unless there was a use that identified the special exception as an option, um, we could not proceed in that way.
Okay, uh, do any other board members?
One more question.
Go ahead.
Uh, when you were asked for the letter of affirmation for this new location, was anybody besides the applicant notified of the decision that was made or that a decision was going to be made?
I don't recollect the particulars of any conversations that I had at that point in time, as that's been almost a year ago. I believe you might be asking if there was some kind of formal notification process, which there is not, when there is a general interpretation of the zoning code. Those are made on a very regular basis by staff to help facilitate and administer the Unified Development Code.
Paulus, are you satisfied now? Okay, okay, let me ask the other board members before I close the hearing. Do you have any other questions of staff? Okay, then let's close the public hearing and open it up to either discussion or emotion. Um,
Mr. Chair.
But uh, we've gotta start someplace. And Mr. Dawson, did you wanna say something?
Yes, I do, uh, Mr. Chair. I moved it in the case of C ten dash two three dash zero six Pavarello House. Uh, that uh, the board upheld the zoning administrator's determination TZ dash CMP dash zero two two three dash zero 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 six three.
Is there a second to that?
I second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I would like an explanation for why the motion was made by the maker and what criteria he used to make that motion?
But, but let me just make sure I simply understand that the motion is to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, the question has been asked for a explanation, which you're not obligated to provide, but if you wish, um, that would be good.
Certainly, I'd be glad to, um, the, basically, uh, the zoning administrator, uh, attempted to make the closest call she could. Uh, it wasn't, you know, the, the appellants all claimed that, oh, God, this doesn't meet the specific requirements of this and ADHS, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And um, uh, that, uh, and there was also the fear factor that they threw in. Uh, and I'm sorry, I just believe that the uh, zoning administrator was in her, did the right thing and was within her realm of her responsibilities and her ability to uh, uh, make the determination that she did. And my motion is to uphold that determination.
Okay.
That help?
That, I understand the explanation, um. I can't speak for, let's pull this on that. But the motion's been made, the motion's been seconded. Um, I would like a roll call. This one, please.
Um, Michael Marks.
Aye.
Bruce Dawson.
Aye.
Jesse Lugo.
Yes.
Miranda Schubert.
Aye.
Irma Duran.
Aye.
Bonnie Paulus.
I didn't hear that, Bonnie.
Bonnie Paulus, nay, thank you, the motion passes.
Okay, I wanna thank everybody for coming down, just coming down is the appropriate way to put it. And uh, letting us know what you feel about these requests. That concludes that matter, I wanna move to the last hearing that we have.
Thank you.
And for those who came for the first and second items, if you are gonna remain here, if you can turn your videos off, we wanna focus in on just those involved in the last case. Um, but as that, if you could uh, announce the, the last case and provide your staff a point. If you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, today's third and final case today is C ten dash twenty three dash oh seven, Steers Residence New Garage. The applicant is Bart Steers. The address is eight four nine nine East Woodland Road, the zoning classification is SR Suburban Ranch. The applicant's property is an approximately three point three seven acre lot, zoned SR Suburban Ranch and is developed with a single-family residence and three detached accessory structures. The applicant is proposing to construct a two thousand seven hundred square foot detached accessory structure as a garage slash shop. The applicant's request to the board. The applicant is requesting the following variances. One, allow the combined total gross floor area of all accessory structures, two hundred square feet or larger, to exceed fifty percent of the combined total gross floor area of the principal structure. And two, allow the detached accessory structure to be constructed with an increased height from twelve feet zero inches to twenty-three feet eleven inches as measured from the design grade elevation to the middle between the eve and ridge of the roof, all as shown on the submitted plans. The engineering section of planning and development services department has no objection or any adverse comments. PDSD staff has no objections to the applicant's requested variances. It is the opinion of staff that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, that the granting of the variances will not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other vicinities in the vicinity and zone in which such property is located. And that the variances requested are the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those UDC provisions which are in question. To date, we have received a total of two written protests, or, excuse me, two written approvals and zero written protests. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Berger, I don't have any questions, uh, other questions from any other board members? Seeing none, let's move on to the petitioner, Mr. Steers. Um, could you raise your right hand? And you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Bart Steers, my address is eighty-four ninety-nine East Woodland Road in Tucson, Arizona, eight five seven four nine.
Okay, why don't you proceed with any comments you think are appropriate?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board, um, I have a short presentation if necessary, it may not be necessary, I just um, wanted to say that, you know, Woodland Road is a unique place, um, and the requests I'm making are very common with the neighborhood and with the street and with the support of my neighbors.
Okay, um, I don't think I have any questions for you, Mr. Steers, um, are there any other, any other board members that have a question? Okay, let me pick a, pause for a moment and ask, is there anybody else in the virtual audience here for this case? Okay, seeing none. I don't think there's any need for any rebuttal or any further comment. I'm gonna close the hearing and ask the boards, um, for discussion or motion, if you are ready to do that. Mr. Paulus, my dear hand up. Um, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Steers, what is the height of your home, the principal structure on the property?
I think it's around twenty-five feet, similar to the um, requested building, it's a two-story.
Okay, and most of your um, buildings, in fact, all of the buildings are located in what looks like the northeast corner of your property, what is the rest of the property used for? Are you a farmer or rancher?
Yes, they're suburban ranch properties, they're pastures with horses and, and other livestock like the rest of the neighborhood.
And do you have any immediate plans to subdivide your property?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Then I will uh, close the public hearing and ask board members for discussion or motion.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, please go.
I believe that if you consider the location of the structures that are on the property currently, um, and the fact that the property is heavily vegetated as shown on the plans with the trees and the use as ranch, I do believe that this um, request for these two variances to increase the building height of the accessory structure and to increase the amount of lot coverage, um, or uh, property that um, the accessory structures have in excess of the principal structure that I would move that um, we grant the variances that were requested for this property.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay? Hearing none, uh, the motion is carrying unanimously, so, Mr. Steers, good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have one more matter to move on to, I understand there's a TV continuance uh, matter we have to deal with, any staff? Um, explain that and uh, so we can move into that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, this is the same item that's been on previous agendas. Uh, TEP is requesting to continue case C ten dash twenty-one dash zero nine. Uh, the TEP keynote to DMP one hundred and thirty-eight KV transmission line upgrade, um, which is an appeal of a zoning administrator determination pertaining to UDC section five point five point four point B, they would like to continue that to the next public hearing, which is currently scheduled for September twenty-seventh.
Okay, so it's a continuance uh, from today, well, today there wasn't a public hearing scheduled, so when was the continuance from?
This is a item that's been continued at the request of TEP for over a year and the board has previously voted. Um, I can't remember the last time, it was maybe three or four months ago to allow them to continue to um, have some more time to prepare their materials as a um, have some more time to prepare their materials, as this was related to the, um, franchise agreement vote that was defeated in the, um, election this year. And so, based on that, they requested some additional time to pull their materials together.
So some time ago, there was a continuance for a specific amount of time, that time has already expired?
Um, I believe so, and we would have previously voted on this request to continue at our prior board of adjustment meeting, but we haven't held them for two months because of various issues. So, they had requested to continue, I think originally for three months, and two months have passed without meeting. So they're asking for one more month so that they can come back to the next meeting in September.
So the continuance is, is a September, uh, session?
Yes, but I might recommend that the board votes to continue to the next regularly scheduled meeting in the case that the September meeting, um, has to be postponed or canceled.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you very much. Uh, is there a board member that wants to make a motion to continue the T E P matter, and you can state the specifics in the motion until the next, uh, scheduled public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm, I move that, uh, we, uh, grant a continuance, uh, to case C ten dash two-one dash zero-nine T E P, the keynote to D M P one-thirty-eight kilovolt transmission line upgrade. I kill the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, they nay? Hearing none, the, uh, motion carries unanimously. So that is that matter, is there anything else that we need to deal with?
I don't believe that there's any other business today, I think we provided updates during the study session earlier to the other items that we had.
Okay, well, thank you, then, uh, let's declare the meeting to be adjourned.
Thank you, board members, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.